Good evening. Good evening, President Carver, Vice President PAC, members of the Governing Board, Superintendent Finch, Mrs. Athletic Training Month serves as an opportunity to educate and raise awareness of the important roles that athletic trainers play in supporting students, staff, and overall athletic programs. Whether it's on the court, on the field, in the gym, on the sand, on the track, or even pre and post game, our DVUSD athletic trainers care for our student athletes and ensure that they are in prime condition to compete. Athletic trainers are healthcare professionals who are highly skilled in the prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and rehabilitation of athletic injuries. These individuals play a vital role in ensuring the safety and well-being of student athletes, providing immediate care in emergency situations, and even helping students return to sport safely after an injury. They remain dedicated to the physical health and overall wellness of our student athletes, promoting physical activity while minimizing risk and injuries, advocating for proper care and recovery techniques. Throughout this month, we encourage all of our students, staff, and the community to acknowledge their dedicated athletic trainers at their schools in our district and their contribution they make to the health and safety of our student athletes. Now it's time to recognize each of the extraordinary trainers, one that we've had up for now a long time. Isabel Maldonado is our first athletic trainer tonight. Isabel is currently in her first year as the athletic trainer at Berry Goldwater High School. She is contracted through Branor Sports Medicine but works on campus at Berry Goldwater full-time and is glad to be part of the DVUSD community. She has begun to develop a sports medicine volunteer program and is eager to continue learning and growing in her profession. She is thankful to all of the wonderful mentors she's had along the way, especially including our other DVUSD athletic trainers. Thank you Isabel Maldonado. I think she may be on her campus tonight, but we wanted to recognize her. Our next athletic trainer is relatively new to JAG Nation as well. Andy Sterba has been at Boulder Creek High School for over a year now through a contract with OSR Physical Therapy. He earned a bachelor's degree in exercise science with an emphasis in athletic training and went on to earn a master's degree in health education and science, both from Western Illinois University. He has been a certified athletic trainer for more than 25 years and has worked at various universities and high schools in Illinois as well as high schools throughout Arizona and Southern California. Thank you Andy Sterba. Looks like he's also on his campus tending to our athletes tonight. I know this one is in the audience because she was my athletic trainer at Deer Valley High School. Next, we celebrate Jessica Rushforth, Deer Valley High School's athletic trainer. Jessica Rushforth is currently in her 20th year as the athletic trainer at Deer Valley High School. In addition to her role, she teaches forensic science at Deer Valley High School and sponsors the Ouchie Club. She also acts as a clinical preceptor for Northern Arizona University's Masters in Athletics Training Program. Ms. Rushforth was also a Teacher of the Year for Deer Valley Unified School District in 2017. Congratulations and thank you to Jessica Rushforth. ... for future healthcare professionals and sponsors the Sports Medicine Volunteer Program at Mountain Ridge. She also acts as a clinical preceptor at Northern Arizona University's Masters in Athletics Training Program. Mrs. Rogers was inducted into the Mountain Ridge Athletic Hall of Fame earlier this month and also has big fans, it sounds like, in the audience. Next is Akayla Dizell from Xanderdale Connor High School. This recognition for her is a testament to the work and care that is given by the athletic trainers throughout the district. Akayla said, "Being recognized at this board meeting for National Athletic Training Month as one of our SDOHS athletic trainers is an incredible honor. I'm deeply grateful to my administration for their unwavering support and trust, allowing me to grow and succeed in this role. I also want to thank the coaches who respect my decisions and recognize me as the licensed healthcare professional I am, ensuring the safety and well-being of all of our athletes. Athletic training is often a behind-the-scenes profession, and the work we do is not always widely acknowledged. But we do it not for the recognition, but because we genuinely care about our athletes beyond just their performance in their sports. This recognition is truly meaningful as it brings awareness to the critical role of athletic trainers in athletes' careers. It's encouraging to see the growth and this appreciation for my profession, and I take pride in saying I am an athletic trainer." Thank you Akayla Dizell. And if we could have all of our athletic trainers who are here tonight back up for a photo. Next, we move on to a team full of spirit and grit. In February, the Deer Valley Skyhawks Spirit Line traveled to the USA National Spirit Competition in Anaheim. This team demonstrated what it takes to have all odds stacked against you and still never give up. They had the determination to win. Heading into the finals of the Varsity Palm Competition, they were in third place, down by five points going into finals. With some serious effort to work on the weak areas the judges identified while scoring during prelims, the Skyhawks moved up to first place by .3 in the finals. It was truly a tough competition, and the team's dedication yielded amazing results. Their coaches, Vicki Jones and Jessica Grigg, are thrilled and so very proud of this team. We thought we'd bring a little fun to the boardroom tonight and show you this performance. Congratulations to USA National Spirit Varsity Novice Palm National Champions Deer Valley High School Spirit Line. Next, we celebrate a group of DVUSD students who put their linguistic skills to the test. In late February, students from the district's Mandarin immersion programs competed in the Chinese Language Teachers Association Chinese Speech Contest at Arizona State University. The competition aims to foster good language skills with emphasis on pronunciation, tones, fluency, delivery, cadence, and content. During the competition, students are asked to prepare and deliver a one- to two-minute speech on a variety of topics. Five DVUSD students walked away with first- or second-place hardware following their speech delivery. First up to be honored tonight is Boulder Creek sophomore Dylan Andrews. He had this to say about his big win. "Winning the Arizona Mandarin Speech Contest has meant the world to me, and my practice has truly paid off. I want to thank Gavelin Peak's Mandarin Emergent Program for providing me with the best Mandarin education in Arizona during my elementary and middle school years. I personally wasn't the best Mandarin student from K through eighth grade, but my emergent teachers at Gavelin Peak never gave up on me, and now because of them, I have achieved something I never thought I would. I also want to thank the University of Arizona and their StarTalk Summer Program for providing me with such a great experience and exposure to high-level Mandarin speakers. Also, my teacher, Mrs. Draw at Boulder Creek High School, she has really helped by pushing me and believing in me every step of the way. All of these programs and all of these people I have mentioned are what has helped me prepare for this competition, and I'm really grateful for them. I look forward to continuing my Mandarin studies at a Division I college where I can play soccer and study international business." He did put a Chinese Mandarin quote in here, I'm gonna have him say that himself because I'm gonna butcher it. So congratulations to Dylan Andrews.
Bu Ya Fang Chi, that means don't give up.
High School Eve Curtis. She had this to say about being named the Arizona Chinese Speech Contest Champion. "I recently participated in the Arizona Mandarin Speech Contest, and I am proud to say that I got first place. Not only did this competition allow me to grow in my love of Mandarin, but it also let me practice my public speaking. Having the ability to present a speech and answer questions in a different language is truly a challenge. This competition had many interesting aspects, from the speech itself to responding to on-the-spot questions in Mandarin and even performing a talent. It took a lot of work to memorize my speech, and I learned so much. Winning this award has helped me realize just how far dedication and hard work can take me. The Mandarin Speech Competition promotes Mandarin language and cultural understanding among students and the community, and I have been inspired by this opportunity. I am excited to continue growing in my Mandarin learning. I'm honored to be here tonight. Thank you." Next, we celebrate the students who have earned a runner-up title, or second place, in the Arizona Chinese Speech Competition. Allison is currently a sophomore at Boulder Creek High School and is part of the AP Chinese Language and Culture Class at Boulder Creek. She participated in the Arizona Chinese Speech Contest and achieved outstanding results, earning second place. Her speech demonstrated exceptional language skills, clear pronunciation, and a deep understanding of how to protect the Arizona homeland. Her dedication and hard work impressed the judges and audiences alike. This achievement highlights her passion for the Chinese language and commitment to mastering it. I don't believe Allison could be here tonight, but we wanted to recognize this accomplishment. Our next runner-up is Boulder Creek High School freshman Clarissa Nguyen. She had this to say about her competition experience. "I am so honored to be here among all of you. I am currently a freshman in high school, and it's been such an honor to win second place in the special Mandarin Speech Competition. It was surely not the easiest preparation for this speech, and I truly couldn't have done it without my Mandarin teacher, Mrs. Draw. She truly is a big part of this journey and kept encouraging me even when I started to lose faith in myself, when I thought I might not be able to memorize my speech. There were many times when I doubted myself and my skills in public speaking, but with her encouragement, along with the support of my family and friends, I was able to gather the confidence to do the speech competition. I also want to thank the other competitors in the heritage group for being such remarkable people and encouraging everyone in the group throughout the process and learning from each other in such little time. Overall, I appreciate the support of everyone who has believed in me, and I am so grateful to have the opportunity to do this competition this year. Thank you again." Our final runner-up tonight is Porter Coyman. Winning second place in the Chinese Speech Contest has been a rewarding experience for him, and this is what he had to say. "It has allowed me to both test my Mandarin skills and address the important issue of water waste in China. Over the past 11 years with the guidance of my wonderful teachers and the years of guidance with other teachers, I've developed a deep love of Mandarin program. I hope it remains in this part of this area, as it has become a valuable asset to not only providing me with a second language, but also has nurtured my intellectual growth. This has enabled me to excel in my honors and advanced placement courses, including Mandarin capstone this year. The competition further fueled my passion for language and has made me even more excited about the Mandarin in my future endeavors." Congratulations Chinese Speech Competition runner-up Porter Coyman. If we could actually have all of our competition winners, as well as Ms. Draw, come up with her class, I would appreciate it for a group photo. Next, we move on to three teams who prove sports are more than just winning games. Athletics is also about their character these athletes display during their competitions. The first of these teams is actually celebrating their season together at their banquet tonight, so they're going to be honored at an upcoming board meeting, but we did want to give a shout-out to Deer Valley High School's girls soccer team. And next, another soccer team that impressed everyone with their sportsmanship. Their coach, Dustin Fechner, had this to say about the team. "On behalf of the men's soccer program at Mountain Ridge, we want to say thank you. Thank you to David Vines and the administration at Mountain Ridge High School for investing in this year's coaching staff. We wanted to change the culture and compete at the highest level. This award is a huge honor because it goes beyond just winning and losing. It's the expectation that we wanted to set for how to act both on and off the field. Respect and integrity are very important core values, and it's wonderful that this program is being recognized for portraying these values. Club soccer has a high impact on these boys' high school soccer career, and our job is to create a culture that represents respect, honesty, and fair play. These players come from different backgrounds with club soccer. They all have different patterns of play, accountability, and respect toward one another. Our job as coaches is to make sure parents and players buy into this coaching style and that as coaches, we invest more into the school and follow the belief system that Mountain Ridge High School has set forth. By doing this, the culture has changed. Once again, thank you to the admin team at the DVUSD District Office for investing in our Mountain Ridge High School soccer program. We couldn't be more proud of this incredible group of young men. Congratulations, six A sportsmanship awardees, Mountain Ridge High School. Most of their players are playing club soccer, but their coach is here." Pairing for this award and this season as a whole meant creating an environment where accountability, discipline, and camaraderie were at the core of everything we did. It wasn't about just playing the game, it was about playing it the right way, lifting each other up, respecting other opponents, and competing with integrity. These boys embraced that vision, and watching them come together as a team, supporting one another and holding each other to a high standard has been one of the most rewarding experiences of my entire career. Winning this award is a testament to their hard work, character, and culture shift that we have built here at Mountain Ridge. It could not have been possible without the support of our teammates. It could not have been possible without the support of my incredible coaching staff and our entire football family. I could not be more proud of these young men, not just for the recognition, but for the way that they have grown as athletes and individuals. This is just the beginning of big things to come for this program, and I can't wait to see what our future holds. Congratulations to 6A AIA Sportsmanship Awardee, Mountain Ridge High School's football team.
I'd like to call tonight's Deer Valley Unified School District Governing Board meeting to order at 7:14. Let the roll call show that all board members are present. For those of you that can't, please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Thank you. Looks like our first item on the agenda is 3A? Oh, maybe I want to adopt the agenda. Yeah, that'd be good. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I need to read it.
Are you wanting to change it? Okay, hold on a second.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, just, right. I move that the governing board adopt the agenda with the exception of pulling consent agenda item 6C for separate consideration.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please vote electronically.
Any opposed?
Sheila, can you vote for next? Did you vote aye?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion passes by aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Item 3A, Dr. Peck.
I move that the governing board accept administration's recommendation for the principal of Los Briesas, Alicia Kellum.
Is there a second? Dr. Zerbock.
Thank you, President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, and community. It is administration's pleasure this evening to recommend Mrs. Alicia Kellum for the principal at Los Briesas Elementary. Mrs. Kellum has years of experience as an administrator. She has years of experience leading programs in schools, and we know that she will continue the great work that has been done from Principal Karash, Dean Morrison, and the Los Briesas staff. And we are pleased again to have her here tonight as our recommendation. Thank you.
Any discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Kellum, I'd like to welcome you as the newest member of the Deer Valley Unified School. Would you like to share a few words with the district?
Thank you so much for this opportunity, and I am so excited to get started and work with the community of Los Briesas.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 3B, Dr. Peck.
I move that the governing board accept administration's recommendation for the principal of New River, Melissa Sapuka.
Is there a second? Dr. Z.
Again, thank you, President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, and the community. Again, it is our pleasure this evening to bring here to you Mrs. Melissa Sapuka as administration's recommendation for the principal of New River. Mrs. Sapuka is a veteran principal in our system. She has extremely committed to all of our students, and we know that she will continue the great work that has been done with Principal Maron and the New River staff. And again, I am pleased to bring her forward as our recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Z. Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Miss Sapuka. You are now the newest member of the Deer Valley Unified School District. Do you have a few words you'd like to share with the district?
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, and community, thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity. I look forward to collaborating with the New River community and continuing them on the great journey that they are already on. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Sapuka. We will take just a few moments to pause the meeting so the newest principals can exit the room. And for those of you that came to sit, feel free to join them out in the foyer for pictures and celebration, and we will resume in just a few moments. Okay, thank you, everybody. Moving on to item 4A, Music in Our Schools. We have a presentation from Ms. White and Ms. Backstrom.
Good evening, President Carver, board members, Dr. Finch, and guests. Tonight, we have Music in Our Schools Month presentation with an update on the amazing opportunities, celebrations, and accomplishments that our students and music teachers have had this school year. Mrs. Anna Backstrom, our Fine Arts CIAS, will share highlights from this past year for all things music in our district.
President Carver, board members, Dr. Finch, and guests, thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize music programs, opportunities, noteworthy accomplishments, collaborators, and partners, funding that support our community of students. With elementary music programs, we offer general music, beginning band, and advanced band at most of our schools. Choir is typically offered for 7th and 8th grade students during the day, while many of our 4th through 6th grade students have before and/or after-school opportunities. Our middle school, our 7th and 8th grade, music programs offer a wide range of programmatic courses from general music, music history, and performance ensembles such as band, choir, and orchestra. Our DVUSD-specific opportunities revolve around vertical programmatic alignment with our high schools. We have dedicated teachers who collaborate with their feeder school directors to create fun and engaging opportunities for our students. DVUSD honor choirs and honor bands are audition-based events that offer the highest level of experience for our music students. All events have clinicians who are hired and work with the students for most of the school day after students have spent months preparing for the event with their teachers. Our performance assessments are another part of our DVUSD opportunities, the accomplishments. Our district has led the state in performance assessment in band and choir for the last 12 years. These are incredible opportunities for our students to gain additional performance experience in front of their peers, three judges, and a clinician who will work with them after the performance. The judges give feedback on voice recorders and an assessment form for what the performers do well at and what they can improve upon. This is also an incredible day for our teachers as they learn additional skills to implement best practices within their ensembles. The district uses this data as a universal screener for student achievement and as a growth measure. Our feeder night events and marching band invitationals are a few more events that allow students to experience the full capacity of our vertically-aligned programming within our music classes. These events bring our community together where we embrace the programs, the families, students, and teachers that contribute to our extraordinary opportunities in DVUSD. Pictures are worth a thousand words, and I would like you to see our students and teachers are going above and beyond when they attend our performance assessments. No matter how large or small the ensemble, they are dressed for success and compete at a high level of performance due to this amazing opportunity that our district supports. Here, you can see the Sandra Day O'Connor High School's choir and Boulder Creek High School's choir performing at the High School District Performance Assessment. You will also see pictures from our honor band event that was held at Mountain Ridge High School this year. I have also included pictures of the Sandra Day O'Connor High School and Mountain Ridge High School's band program competing at the High School Band Performance Assessment. One of our district events is the marching band invitational in the fall. Our bands present their marching shows for everyone to watch free of charge. It is a wonderful event where students and directors alike cheer each other on throughout their performances. Arizona has many continued opportunities for our music students through their professional organizations. ABODA, which stands for the Arizona Band and Orchestra Directors Association and an affiliate of the Arizona Music Educators, offers marching competitions and concert festival events. The AZMBA, Arizona Marching Band Association, offers additional marching band competitions throughout the state. ACE, the Arizona Choral Educators Association, is also an affiliate of the Arizona Music Educators. It offers concert festivals and competitions for our choir students to compete at their schools from across the state. The Arizona All-State Festivals are ran through the Arizona Music Educators Association as well. These events are extremely challenging to participate in as each student is auditioned by adjudicators who specialize in sight reading, solo performance, and specifically for show choirs, choreography is also judged. The WGAZ is a competitive development of winter guards, percussion ensembles, and wind ensembles in the Southwest. You will see that Deer Valley Unified School District has students in all events that reflect the high standards and extraordinary commitment of students and teachers who have participated in these music programs. Our music programs have become distinguished among other districts due to the hard work and dedication of our teachers to provide additional outside district opportunities for our students. These organizations do require membership from our teachers in addition to registration fees to attend the events. Our elementary, middle school, and high school programs have been extremely successful with student participation and excelling in all-state events throughout the year. Here, you can see more high school performance-focused events that many of our teachers have had excelling ratings and highly-skilled students who were able to participate in these state-auditioned ensembles. Our high school programs continue to excel in all events where they take students to compete. The Berry Goldwater High School Choral Program was recently asked to perform at the City of Phoenix mayoral inauguration. The Boulder Creek High School Choral Program was asked to premiere two songs with the Phoenix Boys Choir at their classics concert. This year, we had an amazing event take place where all of our high school marching bands qualified for state and placed. This is a huge celebration for not only our high school directors, but also our feeder programs. As you can see, Berry Goldwater High School won Division III championship this year, while Mountain Ridge High School won the Division I championship for the third year in a row. Next, for the third year in a row, Boulder Creek High School has hosted the first-ever at the time at the time, show choir competition in the state of Arizona. As one of the nationally recognized leaders in the show choir circuit due to high-ranking performances from both of his competitive show choirs, Mr. Douglas has created an innovative opportunity to bring creation and competition to the state of Arizona. Through his knowledge and expertise, Mr. Douglas and the Boulder Creek High School choir boosters have given choral opportunities from around Arizona something more to add to their repertoire. The choirs at this event are not just singing, but you will find high-intensity performance combining both singing and dancing with sometimes multiple costume changes happening fluidly within their show sets. Students stand out with opportunities to compete as soloists and within the ensemble work of the performance. Many of the songs performed have specifically been arranged for each group performing. On this slide, there are show choirs from our very own DVUSD. Left to right in stacked form are groups from Boulder Creek High School's Heart and Soul, which is an SSA ensemble, and Broadway Bound, their SATB ensemble led by Kirk Douglas. On the far side stacked are the Sandro de O'Connor High School Harmonics led by Kristen On this next slide, I would like to introduce DVUSD's first middle school show choir, the Boulder Brillantes. This is a middle school ensemble that was formed just this year by two of our amazing teachers, Travis White from Sunset Ridge and Carissa Frisbee from Canyon Springs. This ensemble is a combination of students from some of the Boulder Creek High School's feeder schools. This is an outside-of-the-school-day ensemble that has worked all year to prepare for this amazing opportunity in our state. Next, we have some pictures from Barry Goldwater High School and Mountain Ridge High School at one of the Winter Guard Arizona competitions. The WGAZ organization offer- fosters growth and quality in the performing arts by offering exceptional performance and education opportunities for our community. Barry Goldwater High School has a Winter Guard, indoor percussion and indoor winds. Mountain Ridge High School has Winter Guard, which according to all of my resources, there are two units. One is basically a JV while the other is a varsity, along with Sandro de O'Connor who has two units of Winter Guard and indoor percussion. Boulder Creek High School also competes with their indoor percussion. On the January 6th full PD day, our teachers receive programmatic focused training that aligns with our district's strategic plan for creating the portrait of a DVUSD graduate, most especially in developing a sense of self and others and cultivating intellectual curiosity around all forms of music and performance. Here you can see some of our amazing clinicians we get to have. On this slide, we took the time to list out some of our amazing partnerships and collaborators that we work with in music. They have helped to form and enrich and to create additional rigor which will continue to build upon the extraordinary opportunities our students have within DVUSD. Many of these partnerships provide access to nationally renowned directors who provide professional development, clinicians for our students' held events and activities, and they also offer a high-quality service that our teachers and community members have come to expect. Everything from collegiate-level side-by-side performance opportunity to professional development, our local schools of higher education and the State Department have been present to assist with our district's music programs. Speaking of the Arizona Department of Education, this is the fifth year that DVUSD music programs have participated in the Arizona State Seal of Arts Proficiency. Through the advocacy work of the Arts Roundtable Advocacy Committee and ADE's leadership, our students have been able to participate in and obtain this prestigious recognition. Along with that, our teachers were able to benefit this past year with consumable supplies through the Arts Consumable Grant. This grant is a direct result of the advocacy work Mr. Abel Dragomir, Choral Director at Mountain Ridge High School, and myself as the ex officio Chair for Music Advocacy for the Arizona Music Educators Association in collaboration with ADE's rollout of the first-ever funding specifically line itemed in the General Fund for Arts Consumables in Arizona's history. This turned out to be a whopping $10 million win for the teachers in Arizona. Other partnerships consist of Disney workshops and performances, Universal Studio featured performances and the Forum Music Festivals. Not only do some of our schools participate in these amazing collaborative events, but most excel in their performances and have brought a well-renowned sense of pride to the Deer Valley Unified School District in Arizona. These trips are a huge undertaking for our directors, but they have created such a wonderful place for students to thrive. I can speak to these trips as some of my best memories in teaching as they are either attending as a chaperone or taking my own choral programs to compete. In DVUSD, we also have some of the most incredible retired master teachers in the profession. This isn't just my opinion, as most of them have been recognized through our State Music Educators Association as Teachers of the Year. These retired teachers give up their time to assist our directors with best practices to increase skill sets and standards development within our students and programs. We also have a wonderful partnership with the Musical Instrument Museum who allow our students, directors and chaperones to attend field trips with focused workshops for additional learning opportunities for free. The- they also provide a robust and unique online curriculum to support our music programs in preparation for their field trips and to be used as an extension of our supplemental resources in the classroom. Our very own music supporter, community ed programs, supports our programs during their Summer Music Rocks Camp where students can either get a jumpstart on their new instrument for the next school year or continue to refine their existing skills. And I will turn it over to Ms. White for the funding slides.
So, we'll talk a little bit about our music fund for all of these outstanding music programs. Just over eight- $4.8 million represents the base salary of $51,000 with benefits of just shy of $22,000 for our 66 music teachers in the district. With many of our teachers having multiple years of experience, this is the minimum of our expenditures on staffing. Capital includes our adopted K-12 district-approved curriculum resources, which are Music First and Quaver. The 2019 bond provided $2.5 million to support our K-12 fine arts programs. And Title Fun- or Tu- I'm- excuse me, Title IV grant funding has been instrumental in securing master teachers to support professional learning, additional instructional supplies and instrument repairs for existing equipment that is not covered by our bond. K-12 human capital includes the amount spent on our certified teachers teaching music and the available IBN and non-IBN music-related addendums. The 2019 bond has supported our purchases of music equipment such as risers for choir, sound systems, new instruments and uniform purchases throughout all of our K-12 schools. The bond has also covered much-needed renovations for our high school auditoriums. In addition, we purchased five ultrasonic instrument cleaners, one for each region. We actually used Essar funds for this although the cleaners were originally slated to be paid for through our bond money. As you can see, the MNO override and bond funds have significantly supported the overall excellence of music programming offered to our DVUSD students, K-12.
At this time, I would also like to recognize the adopted curriculum resources, Quaver Ed and Music First, in which our extraordinary music programs use to support first-best instruction with each of our district music programs. In conclusion, music programs provide students with unique experiences that allow them to explore their passions, maximize their creativity and critical thinking skills while learning valuable lessons about self-motivation, dedication, teamwork and communication. Simply put, music programming is essential to the proper functioning of our society. Students who participate in music programming continue to demonstrate categorical evidence of having a better grade point average, scoring better on standardized tests in reading and math and having lower dropout rates. Now, I would like to give one of these students a chance to share his story. I would like to introduce Isaac from Mountain Ridge High School to give a student's perspective of how music in DVUSD has changed his life.
Good evening. My name is Isaac Singh and I'm a junior at Mountain Ridge High School. I am the top tenor saxophonist in the Mountain Ridge Wind Ensemble and a drum major of the Mountain Ridge Pride of the West marching band. I'm incredibly proud to say that I am part of an organization of camaraderie, legacy and excellence. Thanks to the support of dedicated and amazing music educators such as Mr. Rocky from Highland Lakes, Mr. Vogel and Mr. Malone from Mountain Ridge, and the opportunities and successes they have gifted me, I always feel confident when mentioning my craft. In the beginning, I started band in 5th grade at Highland Lakes. During this time and the year after, my brother, a Mountain Ridge drum major at the time, and sister, a color guard member, were on their way to winning Mountain Ridge's first state marching band championship. I was lucky enough to be able to volunteer for the high school marching band at this time and experience firsthand how the high school band program shaped my siblings into incredible leaders, musicians and people. I also noticed how their efforts had an astonishing impact on something larger than my siblings' accomplishments and astounding growth thanks to the band program inspired me to be where I am today. A drum major, leader, three-years all-state musician, dependable bandmate, best friend and success-driven student. As I advanced through first the Highland Lakes program and now the Mountain Ridge program, my dedication, time management, communication, as well as many other essential skills were tested and definitely improved upon. However, the lasting effects of band, I believe, are not just essential skills. What I truly think sets band and music programs across the district apart from other extracurriculars are the opportunities they provide. Thanks to music programs, I've met some of the best modern band composers, I've performed in front of thousands, I've traveled to new places, I've competed on a national level and I have created incredible bonds with people I will remain friends with past high school. These lasting experiences have definitely forced me to step out of my comfort zone and have pushed me to what I never thought was possible. This includes performing a marching band solo in front of 10,000 people at the state marching band finals. Before the music program, that was not a glimpse in my imagination. Now, thanks to it, I jump into challenges and put myself out there with almost no fear. A final aspect of band that has sincerely impacted me is the diverse emotional experiences. In marching band, nothing beats the excitement, pride and triumph of hearing. Now joining us from Glendale, Arizona, the Mountain Ridge High School Pride of the West. After hearing this announcement, the feeling of walking onto the field to a roaring crowd is otherworldly. Putting heart and soul into a final project for thousands to watch creates ultimate fulfillment and is truly the pinnacle of performance. On the other hand, concert band emotes- evokes a different emotion. Personally, I rarely cry, but performing a beautiful piece activates some passional- passionate emotion. Nothing to this day has impacted me so emotionally than performing with the all-state band last year. This performance was indeed one of my life's most peaceful and beautiful moments. What I really want to convey is that music programs in my life and many others is much more than- they're much more than just activities. They are connections, experiences, pure emotions and lifelong memories. None of this would be possible without the support of this board and the district. Thank you.
Thank you again for your support of our extraordinary music programs and for the upcoming proclamation for Music in Our Schools Month. This proclamation acknowledges March as an extraordinary time for celebrating music programs in DVUSD and the incredible support given to our students. Thank you.
Any discussion from the board?
Thank you for coming and speaking with us. I know it's kind of nerve-wracking, you know, everybody's just kind of staring. Stay with it, you're going to love it. Even when you're old and you can't do it anymore, you're still going to torture your kids making the sounds or following them and singing or that whatnot. Music makes the world go round.
And I would just like to thank all of the work from our music faculty. Not all of these kids are born with this kind of a talent and for those of you that haven't taken time to go out onto our campuses and listen at the different performances, you're really missing out because we have some amazingly talented children and we've been able to find the best of the best in my opinion in the faculty that's been- pull this talent out of these kids and as this young man has demonstrated, get out of their shells and become more active members of society, taking chances and opportunities they might otherwise not. So, thank you for all the hard work on both fronts. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Miglerino.
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, we have the- I've got a hot mic here. We have the financial reports to share for the month of February that are included in the- in the packet. I just wanted to comment briefly on the MNO report. We have updated this, obviously, from January the last time we shared this information with you and the projected carryforward, I think, is the important number that we would look at on this report, which is in the lower right corner. And it's up from that January report, now representing almost $1.9 million in projected carryforward. We would like to see that number be considerably more than that as we progress towards the end of the year. I will point out a couple of the negative amounts that you see, and I'll just speak to a couple of these. The school discretionary budget, and I mentioned this the last time, it's currently showing almost $2 million overcommitted at this point. That is not uncommon for the schools to charge things to the maintenance and operation budget and then journal entry that at the end of the year when they are able to raise funds and determine where they're at with their budget. So, we do expect to be- to receive all of that, nearly $2 million back. That number will probably grow from the current $1.9 million over time and then at the end of the year, it will be trued up. Likewise, the department budgets are showing overcommitment as well. They don't have that same luxury, so that line item will likely show as overstated. Some of that is vacancy savings that shows in the staffing lines at the top of the report that are being filled with contractors that are just being charged to, in some cases, the individual department budgets. But again, nothing is out of sorts or alarming based on what we had originally planned in- in the budget and we would be- And we would be, we are looking to have that carry forward help us next year with the financial situation that we've previously discussed. So, trying to grow that carry forward number greater than the $2 million that it shows today. I'd be happy to answer any questions the boards might have.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Miglerino. Move on to 5A, Dr. Pack. And Dr. Smith, if you'll get in the batter's box.
I move that the governing board approve the 2025-26 Certified Performance Pay Plan as recommended.
For a second. Dr. Smith.
President Carver, members of the governing board, there is no new presentation nor other changes to the plan that we presented in preview as a draft. We're bringing that back to you today for approval. I will just add real quickly that we have had a couple of conversations about the professional responsibility and professional development hours with looking at whether there might be ways to reduce them in the future. At this point, we did have a committee meeting that brought you the plan that you're looking at right now. We agreed 100% of the people on the committee with full attendance, 100% attendance, agreed on this plan. And I would just want to, again, suggest that this plan be approved and that we look at this as potentially in future years. That's all.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. You said at your committee meetings you had different groups represented, so DVEA was there and DVBLT, all the, all the groups. I just learned that the DVA represents about 60% of the teachers that are members. What about the other teachers that are not in that organization? Are their voices heard in your community? Because 20 hours as a teacher, teachers put in so much work before and after school, above and beyond, to have them go do more hours besides what they put in on a long day is a lot to ask. So, have the voices of the teachers who are not represented by a group been heard?
President Carver, Dr. Pack, the committee is made up of 10 members. It has always, well, actually, since I've been a part of the committee since 2016, made up of 10 members. Four of them are certified for our administrators from schools and then two of them are parents. Sometimes we have had another parent on there. The, the members are selected through a process where they apply basically for the, for being on the committee. Or if the DVA president would like to be on the committee, they will move a DVA member off and come on the committee themselves. But there is no part of the process that specifies there must be both members of DVA and non-DVA members. There are no certified, classified members on the committee because it doesn't deal with classified members at all. And yes, so thank you. There is a process, I believe, in DVA for looping that out. I don't know, as you know, we do not require a vote by DVA or all certified staff during the process. I will suggest that many of those hours that you talked about might be eligible for those professional responsibility hours, depending on the agreement with the principal at the school. I will also just tell you, over the last three years, we've had over 2,000 certified staff members each year and average have 10 that did not qualify for the hours. So, the vast, vast majority of these people qualify for the hours.
Thank you.
My mic being on all the time. My apologies. I just want to follow up in regards to this. When I taught first grade, I was required to do those 20 hours. And, you know, I'm going to be 100% honest, it was challenging at times. And that was several years ago. And I know that it's even harder these days for our teachers and, and what they're having to deal with. So, I, I would really like to try to, and I apologize, I was not at the last board meeting, I was stuck in an education committee, but I want to acknowledge the teachers who have reached out with their concerns about that many hours, what we can do to work together and simply just saying it's not an option. Maybe we can come to a compromise of 10 hours instead. Or, you know, there was suggested one hour, but finding some middle ground there, if that's a possibility, to make sure that our teachers are happy and not stressed with all the stuff they're already having to, to deal with right now. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns for Dr. Smith?
I seem to recall we did this before while we had the discussion. And part of the reason it was set at the 20 was because there were already so many that were doing it and that was where we, how long has it been at 20?
I look back at every plan until the 2016-17 school year. And it has always, I'm sorry, President Carver, Ms. Fisher, it has always been 20 hours. It has changed at times the proportion of the payout that it makes up from, it's been 25 at times, it's been 10 at times, and I think even 20% of the overall plan at times. And there was about, I'm sorry, 2018, 2019, the board requested that we add professional development hours in there also, as they could be either professional responsibility or professional development hours. So, they were added at that time.
And I thought we had evened it out because of that. So, I thought we had leveled it out by using that.
Yeah. President Carver, Ms. Fisher, sorry to interrupt you, if I could just say, we did also, if you remember during the COVID years, we submitted a, a change, an alternate of the plan mid-year, given the difficulty in obtaining those hours, and reduced them by 50%.
The reason I'm asking the questions is because I just think it would be a good idea, not necessarily to just eliminate or say not do it, because it, it does inspire some to, to get the professional development, even if they don't have time for the, for the hours, which is what we found before. But perhaps there'd be a method to where, say, something happens like COVID or a new baby, or, you know, you never know what could happen, maybe a way that they could work with their administrator to ensure that that's not, you know, a significant hit due to circumstances that are beyond their own control. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of what I would like to see, because I know that there was a lot of discussion, but I would also like to hear from more teachers on their thoughts.
President Carver, Ms. Fisher, I, I agree with what you're saying. As a matter of fact, for the new baby example, if an individual teacher is out for a certain period of time, those hours are prorated. That could be any type of leave, whether it be a new baby or their type of leave, or, or it's all prorated for the time that they're in the job or their FTE. So, if they're only half-time position, they only have to do half the hours. And so, there are adjustments like that in the plan.
Perfect. Thank you. Clarified, excuse me. It says that they can use professional development hours, but they have to be logged outside of the normal workday. And I know our early release on Fridays, our teachers get an opportunity for professional development there, but, and then sometimes, I'm not sure if it's still done, but when I was teaching, we would take a, a day with our whole group or our whole team and go do a professional development. But again, that wouldn't apply to that because it would have been during normal work hours. So, I, I love the idea of being able to use them. I just don't know when our teachers are supposed to find the time to, to do that.
Can I just follow up? Given the temporariness of adding one student to each class, maybe as we teach our students to problem solve and do some critical thinking, we could do that, come to some understanding of meeting halfway in the middle, maybe 10 credit hours, because teachers, especially sped teachers, have all their IEPs and all their, all their paperwork they have to do. Also, teachers have to get their continuing education to maintain their state licenses. So, having additional hours on top of everything they already have to do is a lot. So, as the dog, the tail that wakes the dog, let's throw the teachers a bone and make it 10 one year. Can we do that?
That's, I, I feel like that's a really good common, you know, very good meet in the middle amount.
The way that we are sitting right now is that we're just, we're voting on the proposal the way that it sits. So, if it gets voted down today, then the committee will come back with a different proposals, the way I understand where we are with this. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yes.
The only thing that I would like to add is, it's, it's apparent that there is some concern by some educators and some board members as to the number of professional responsibility hours that are currently listed. But as you've mentioned, the numbers that pan out show that very few people have been in over the years. So, what I would, what I would recommend is that we move forward with the plan that's been given, knowing or expecting that when we discuss this next year, that there is a better consideration made with reaching out to larger sampling of the staff to see how they feel about it. If, if it is problematic, then maybe we need to roll it back. But it seems like the percentage of people that aren't successfully allotment of performance pay is finite compared to the overall population of DVUSD. So, from a business standpoint, I would just think that we would move forward in that manner. But everybody vote your conscience.
Mr. Carver, I just want to note, the committee or, or anyone, they bring recommendations to the board, and historically, we have, as a board, made changes based on board recommendations and what we feel is appropriate. If individuals on this board wish to modify the motion to accept this with the adjustment of that one portion to 10 hours, it could be done in this one meeting if the board so willed. I'm just pointing that out because we have done that in the past when, I mean, we appreciate the recommendations and we appreciate the work, but it's our responsibility to make the decisions on what we believe is best for our employees and our constituents. And that being said, I would like to move...
Just as a point of order, we'd have to finish this vote first and then consider a new motion. So, since this has already been motioned and seconded, we would have to complete that. And then you could, what's that?
We would make it first and then vote on both.
Yeah. If you want some more information, Mr. Carver, I could fill you in. Yeah, if you've got something else to add to the conversation, Dr. Finch?
Yeah. I think part of the explanation needs, maybe Jim or Scott could jump in here. Where's, what's the origin of this? Where does it come from? What's the purpose behind it? Because that makes, will help others understand where this comes from. And I think you mentioned it in the last time you presented, but what's the history of it and where does it come from and why? Where does the funding come from?
President Carver, Dr. Finch, yes, it was mentioned in the original presentation, in the presentation that you have in front of you now, the origin. Jim can correct me on the years, but it was from the Classroom Site Fund Prop 301 many years ago, which since has expired and then been renewed a couple of years ago, and which levied 0.06% tax. Is that correct, Jim? 0.06%? Okay, never mind. Sorry. And, and that money was to be allocated toward teachers and, and originally was allocated in different funds, funds to go to base salary, funds to go to a performance pay, and a fund to go to, what was it at the time, called menu items, whether it be for testing support or, or, or curriculum, et cetera. When it was renewed, it was reduced to two funds and the amount in each fund was, was not legislated. You didn't have to put a certain amount in each fund anymore. We used those two funds, one of them for performance pay. As of the la, over the last couple of years, that has resulted for those, just over 2,000 employees that do receive this in the $4,500 range for that piece of their pay. And that would be, of course, in addition to any increase in the salary from the other fund.
Jim, if you could correct me if I'm wrong. The point of having the service hours is because you cannot just give them the money. You have to have something for it, otherwise it's a gift of funds. That's the reason. So, whether it's one hour, 10 hours, or 500 hours, it's still the same dollar amount. And so, we, we could, and, and like I said, we could make the motion. And to that point, I would like to move that we adopt this performance pay plan, adjusting the service hours to 10 hours versus 20.
I second that.
And then now we would have to vote on the one and then the second if the one does not pass.
That would be more additional cost to the district, just to let you know. This, because the hours that they serve usually is, if it's not tied to PD, will be tied to taking tickets at a junior high game or participating at an event, doing something for the district. So, it will drive up the cost for the district, just to let you know.
Our teachers will still serve. I've seen them do it, I know they will. They will still serve and so will our parents.
So, let me ask for...
What, what are other districts doing? My understanding is that Paradise Valley includes professional development. So, are teachers that do their Fridays and those hours that they put in, for example, Paradise Valley includes, allows those to be used. But what, what kind of is the average of districts, large districts?
The, I think Scott had it in his presentation at the last meeting. In general, the, the districts are similar. They can obviously tweak it. Maybe I can talk a little bit about that, Scott?
President Carver, Ms. Simicak, the, we have started collecting other districts' plans, something we hadn't done in, in, in a couple of years, and is actually suggested by the Performance Pay Committee that we do that. I also know that DVA has started collecting other districts' plans. And I do not have a very good synopsis of those plans right now. I do know there's at least one district that is pretty much exactly our plan. They have the, you know, professional, it might be word for word, as far as I know. I know there's, like Paradise Valley, there's a district that does use the PLC time and making sure there's PLC attendance as part of their plan. So, there are similar items like that, but I don't have a good synopsis of all the plans.
Just one more thing I need to do, I swear. I just, when I say, I know that, that our teachers are meeting those 20 hours and have been in that, that experience before, because yes, if you don't do the 20 hours, you don't get paid and, and our teachers need to be paid, so they do that. But it just, with the, with the cuts that we're having to make across the district and knowing that we might not be able to, you know, provide the raises in the, depending on what that future looks like, I just, I would, I would like to cut our teachers some slack here. I'm just trying to find ways to help them, you know, just have a work-life balance instead of working 60, 80 hours a week and then having to figure out hours to, to volunteer. And, and I know it's important, but I, I, I think our DVUSD teachers will volunteer and I think our parents will volunteer. And I, it's a teacher's heart. They, they do that. They're not going to leave kids stranded if they needed a volunteer to help run a dance show or an art show or something. So, I really just, that's, that's what I want to say. And I, I would like to revisit the, the number. And I, I would like to revisit the, the number.
We have a first and a second on the amendment. So we're voting on the amendment first. Is that correct?
So this is just a vote to, to amend it.
This, this, yes, this is the vote on the amendment. I don't have it on my screen, Mrs. Taylor. I'm sorry. It's on that screen?
It's on hers.
Did yours come up?
Oh, so that needs to be read again? We've already firsted and we seconded?
Firsted and.
Alright. All those in favor? On the amendment.
I did. Firsted and. Oh, it did. She's voting aye, but it didn't pop up.
Aye.
So just to clarify, we're voting on the motion that the governing board approved the twenty-five, twenty-six certified performance pay plan with adjustment of service from hours from twenty to ten. Aye.
Now we vote on the actual.
Back to the original question.
So we're voting on it as amended?
Aye.
We're voting on the original? It didn't come up?
Yeah, it's not on my laptop. I think everybody needs clarification, what voting aye on this one would do. Okay, my mistake. In, in other worlds, you have to accept both in order to get it to go. Can you change mine to nay, please?
Just to clarify, I did not click abstain, so I would say nay. Thank you.
Now we vote on the amended?
And we voted on it both.
Right, but do we still have to vote to pass it with that amendment? Cause we voted to amend it. So now we have to vote one more vote? Okay.
Little bit different.
We should vote to accept the amended.
Learning process for all this. Okay, so are we good? Okay, five B. Dr. Finch? Yeah, sorry, Dr. Pack first.
I move that the governing board approve the governing board meeting dates for regularly, for regular scheduled meetings for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Now, Dr. Finch.
Here we go. The uh, this was a preview, the last uh, meeting, bringing it back. Uh, the only difference, these uh, parallel meetings for this year. The only difference was obviously uh, Veterans Day fell on the eleventh, which is a Tuesday. So we had to move it. Um, and spring break, or Thanksgiving break is in there as well. So we chose in between, picking November eighteenth.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Item five C, Dr. Pack.
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-six employee benefit recommendation with the one change that the dependent rates for the PPO be corrected to eight point four percent increase. Previously stated to be eleven point four percent increase.
Jim?
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, I would like to explain uh, the late change. I apologize for the lateness of this, um, but our um, underwriter that was working on putting these numbers together was doing so on his laptop during one of the benefit work teams. And uh, we noticed late this afternoon, an error in one of the formulas. It is uh, to the benefit of our employees to reduce that cost. Um, so it would, going down from eleven point four percent, which was what we previewed with you at the previous board meeting, down to eight point four percent. To put that into numbers for you, uh, family coverage, the most expensive coverage for um, for our employees uh, originally would have been at a hundred, a hundred and fifteen dollar increase over the current year. Uh, it goes down to eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, so uh, we would like to make sure that we don't overcharge uh, due to a calculation error in his spreadsheet. And in his defense, um, uh, first I must disclose, I, I'm very fond of uh, Mr. Davis. Um, we were asking him to put together, I think, a total of seven or eight options on the fly. Um, and as a result, I could understand how maybe this uh, minor uh, miscalculation happened. Thankfully, we caught it today before the board has formally acted. So we would ask that the board consider the reduced amount for the dependent care. Other than that, nothing else changed. Uh, did want to note, there are a couple of the work team members that are in the audience, or they were at the start. So um, I think they may still be here. Just wanted to acknowledge all the hard work that they uh, put in. And one other thing, uh, we did a survey since the last time we met, just to make sure that there was some clarification. Uh, because the one major change uh, is the maximum out-of-pocket amount is increasing from four thousand to five thousand. And on the HSA, that was forty-five hundred to five thousand. So they will be the same um, for next year, both being five thousand dollars for the maximum out-of-pocket. And part of that clarification and the reason for the survey, it, some people thought they would have to pay five thousand dollars out of their pocket to have the insurance coverage. No, the deductible's still in place, so there's a twelve hundred and fifty dollar deductible. There's co-insurance after that, so the employee is responsible for twenty percent. The plan picks up eighty percent. And then once their twenty percent plus their deductible hits the five thousand dollars, then they don't have any expense. So it's not just five thousand dollars to get to the coverage, it's, there's a process to get there. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that that was clarified in the, in the process. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any, any questions from the board?
I do have one.
Mrs. Fisher.
Uh, they don't, their annual well checks are prior to hitting uh, any out-of-pocket, yes? Did you get a well check?
President Carver, Ms. Fisher, I think on the high deductible plan, um, uh, wellness checks are, I'm not a hundred percent sure, not uh, certain on the uh, PPO plan, but I can find that out and certainly share that with the board.
I'm almost positive it would be, but.
I, I think it is, but I don't want to say without knowing for certain.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item five D?
I move that the governing board table this agenda item for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six academic year based on administration recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Moffett?
Good evening, President Carver, governing board members. Um, a bit of information, as that is a different recommendation than we brought to you last time we were together, so let me fill you in. Um, we did a review yesterday, as I shared with you, we would, um, coming into this upcoming meeting. What we learned, um, there were some changes over the last couple of weeks. We ran Power Schools to look at the updated numbers of, of all classrooms that would roll into the upcoming year. What we found was that there would be a total of six classrooms across our entire system. If you remember last time we were together, there were five. Um, when we looked at each of those six classrooms in our system, we have many, many classrooms, as you can imagine, in forty-two um, uh, schools across our system, six is not that many. When we looked at how many students each one of those classrooms would be over, it was one student only. So what we know, if I, as a reminder for you, we, this is really not to speak to how we manage staffing at this point, moving into next year. The MOU is really speaking to how we manage staffing in the fall. Whether we would be adding additional sections, how we would be moving teachers around in surplus and whether or not we would be adding teacher staffing or aid time staffing. With one student over across a section, that qualifies that teacher for aid time and not necessarily the trigger of another entire teacher or another classroom section. So because of that, um, and the potential, Kelly, Fisher and I had a conversation about it today too. The, the potential, um, uh, maybe emotional distress or distress of the belief that our classroom sizes are going up because this MOU is, is passing, that with that minimal amount, um, and, you know, I think we estimated it might cost around forty to fifty thousand dollars potentially. And this is predicting the future, of course. It might not quite look like that. That it would probably not be necessary to do this upcoming cycle. And it could be something that we bring forward. If we find ourselves in a budget predicament next year, we could reconsider it next year. So I just wanted the opportunity to explain that to you and let you know that we feel it would be fine if the board were to table that for an additional um, employment year. And I, I can take any questions related to that.
Any questions? Seeing none. I appreciate it, Ms. Moffett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're not putting it down, but we're not approving it. We're just gonna push it off. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Consent agenda, Dr. Pack?
Six C. Alright, I move that the governing board approve consent agenda items six A through six I, with the exception of six C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright. Any opposed? Thank you. Item six C, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the human resource changes, including the recommended list of contracted employee renewals.
Is there a second? A second. Any discussion?
I do.
Okay, Dr. Pack?
Forgive me, this is because I'm new, but I am not sure how we as a board can vote to approve human resources for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six contracts when we haven't had the study session on the budget that's been requested, nor a presentation of any suggested or intended potential budget cuts. If we are going to discuss recommendations to reduce costs, like by a reduction in district workforce as a survey that was referenced at the last meeting alluded to, then I don't understand how we can approve human resources contracts and then later renig on those. So I, I would welcome some explanation.
Yeah, Janet can fill you in.
Ms. Moffett?
President Carver, Dr. Pack, I think I can speak to maybe some elements of, of your question. We do begin to prepare staffing in the fall semester in preparation for the upcoming. And as part of that um, staffing process, we see what our reductions are going to be. With, um, and that is also part of what I was speaking to you about regarding the MOU. So what we have seen is really due to our decrease in enrollment, we, that we have seen a reduction in our FTE. That doesn't mean that we have needed to reduce in force. So we're not doing a RIF, for example. We are able to um, see that financial reduction through um, collapsing of vacancies. So that's separate from what our contract renewal process requires. So contract renewals are statutory requirement. Um, but, and then we also have a policy that addresses it. In Deer Valley, our policy requires that we bring this list to you in the month, by the month of March. And I believe, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think it's March fifteenth. Um, we're supposed to present this um, early recommendation to you for your consideration. The statute requires that we provide advance notice to our contracted employees, whether or not the board will renew them. That must be done by April fifteenth. So it is normal for the board to see sometime in the, sometimes we'll even bring it in February. But it is pretty typical, um, that a public school board will see this um, recommendation um, for, for you to authorize us to initiate these contracts. Otherwise, we would have statutory requirements to meet and that it would be a non-renewal process that's outlined, um, actually in the contract, contract language that you'll see um, later this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett, and thank you also for the six other questions I asked ahead of time.
You're welcome.
Um, you did mention earlier in the fall, before I was on this board, a, uh, I forgot the term you used, the total numbers. Um, if you could please send that to um, the current board members, so we can peruse that. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one more. Um, just, it may help, may not, but, um, for clarifying, uh, even though we're renewing or we're approving these contracts, these amounts for these positions, um, there is policy that employees can be moved, locations if we needed to adjust. So we basically, if we have a spot here to fill and access here, we can, we can move. But this way we can issue contracts.
Thank you.
If that helps, yeah.
I think another variable too, is we don't know all the variables in the equation. Obviously, the legislature gives us money in the eleventh hour. So this is really a statute, statutory requirement to start the ball rolling.
The renewal portion is yes. I should also point out that you'll, you'll see names continue to come forward spring. For example, our itinerant list, you'll see on uh, March, at the March twenty-fifth meeting, along with any additional names that might be coming forward in the other employment groups.
Any further questions? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item seven A, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to pre-approve the addenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just the same concern I always have. There's only one, but I don't like that there's not another option than uh, for students to raise money for a coach. So I'm still concerned that we're using student activities funds for salaries without students approving it prior.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Item seven B, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board approve the proclamation declaring March Schools Month in the Deer Valley Unified School District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Governing Board proclamation, whereas for more than forty years, March has been officially designated by the National Association for Music Education as Music in Our Schools Month, encouraging communities across the nation to focus on music education. And whereas, music education is a part of a well-rounded education for every student as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act.
And whereas, the purpose of this celebration is to raise awareness of the lasting positive impact of music education on the academic, personal, and professional growth of our students. And whereas, music education shapes the way our students understand themselves and the world around them, allowing for a deep engagement with learning. And whereas, Music in Our Schools Month reminds us that schools, that school is where all children should have access to music. And whereas, music educators, students, and communities throughout the Deer Valley Unified School District demonstrate the importance of quality music education programs to the lives of young people. Whereas, the Deer Valley Unified School District joins our music students, educators, and communities in celebrating the power of music education. Now therefore, I, Paul A. Carver, Jr., Governing Board President of the Deer Valley Unified School District, do hereby proclaim on the eleventh of March, two thousand twenty-five, that March will be celebrated as Music in Our Schools Month and encourage all citizens to celebrate and acknowledge every day, but especially in March, that music education is an essential part of every student's well-rounded education. Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor, item seven C, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board approve the proclamation declaring March National Athletic Training Month in the Deer Valley School District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Deer Valley Unified School Board Governing Board, Deer Valley Unified School District Governing Board Proclamation, whereas athletic trainers are healthcare professionals who are highly skilled in the prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and rehabilitation of athletic injuries. And whereas athletic trainers play a vi- vital role in ensuring the safety and well-being of student athletes, providing immediate care in emergency situations, and helping students return to sports safe safely after injury. And whereas, the month of March has been designated as National Athletic Training Month, a time to recognize and celebrate the valuable contributions of athletic trainers in the schools, communities, and beyond. And whereas, athletic trainers are dedicated to the physical health and overall wellness of student athletes, promoting physical activity while minimizing the risk of injury and advocating for proper care and recovery techniques. And whereas, National Athletic Training Month serves as an opportunity to educate and wears raise awareness of important of the important role athletic trainers play in supporting students, staff, and the overall athletic program. Now therefore, I, Paul A. Carver, Jr., Governing Board President of Deer Valley Unified School District, do hereby proclaim on the eleventh of March, two thousand twenty-five, that March, two thousand twenty-five, will be celebrated as National Athletic Training Month and encourage all students, staff, and community members to acknowledge the dedicated athletic trainers in our district and their contributions to the health and safety of student athletes and witness thereof. I have, okay, sign the bottom. So all those in fa- I'm sorry, any discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, thank you, appreciate that. I'm the only one, come on, guys, you're killing me, all right. On to item eight A, preview, Dr. Finch.
We will go through all six of them and then we'll discuss and ask questions. Uh first one there, we are going to actually skip and not do that one. It's, there's some additional recommendations that will be coming at a later meeting, so we'll skip that one. The board policy uh updates that come from ASBA or our legislature, um they are the ones that uh start this process, so um in we have, as you know, we have our own attorneys as well that give us um direction when we have questions. Uh many board policies go to them, it first starts, and they give us their feedback, and then we bring it to you. Uh there's a preview time, uh well, like we'll do it today, we'll preview it, and then we have two weeks to ask questions. And uh that, well, if we need to contact our attorneys, we can in uh clarify any language that you might want corrected or changed or mooted or uh adjusted. And then we'll bring these back on March twenty-fifth, so. First one, um policy BAA, uh self eval for the board, this is statute. Um so on Oc- uh by October thirtieth, we need to do, it's recommended by ASBA um that we remove that language because the legislature changed it. And so we're recommending that we um follow ASBA. The track changes are in red, that um is what we can, uh that way you can tell what was changed. PD BDA is the organizational meeting. We are recommending uh removing the need for a temporary president uh to be elected and to call the organizational meeting to order the, um this one causes confusion to the public. Um and it's, it's actually ASBA's language. Why do you elect a temporary president and then rekt a elected president? So we looked around at other school districts, talked toward to our um council, and they said that it would be totally fine to uh have the current vice president if the president uh lost in the last election, or the next available uh officer, in this case, could be the ASBA delegate if both the vice president and the president were not available for that first meeting. So we are recommending uh track changes there to remove um that temporary president concept. BD BA, Agenda Preparation Dissemination, again, this is one that's um what Deer Valley has their own customization of it. It's, our council is not recommending um that we continue with this model that we have today of having the vice president in the same room as the board president and the superintendent when an agenda is made. ASBA and our attorneys uh recommend that we uh only have the the board president because uh what happens is if anyone contacts uh the vice president or the president, in this case, um then it would be creating a daisy chain with three people uh commenting on a something that we would vote in for in the future. So um they, both our attorneys and uh ASBA does not recommend our current model. We changed it about four years ago, and uh we recommend that we go back to the ASBA policy. Policy BEDD, Rules of Order, this one is uh the, was decided um in February twenty-fifth on uh twenty twenty-three. That was a retreat that we did, and we, as a group, decided to do five minutes for our reports. And so we've been asked uh to codify that in our uh board policy, so that's a recommendation. And we passed it by our attorney, and they said that would be fine. The last one is a policy JLCD, and Dr. McCusker is going to talk about that one. And then we'll open it up to discussion and our comments, questions that you might have about uh the policies. Dr. McCusker.
Thank you, Dr. Finch, good evening, President Carver and governing board members. I'm here this evening to discuss policy JLCD. Uh this would seem familiar to you because it has been before you previously. Uh this is a policy that continues to be revised uh by the School Boards Association, and I'm gonna walk you through uh one of the primary reasons for this revision. Uh the seizure management or seizure action plan that has come before the state legislature actually started in the state of Kentucky uh with a young woman who has seizures. And it was a remedy that our state legislature brought forward in two thousand twenty-two to ensure that campuses and school districts across the nation are aware of seizure management and the impact of training um regarding seizure planning and our medical professionals. So that is the most recent amendment to JLCD. Uh it does identify students dispensing medication as well as medical professionals in the school setting dispensing medications.
All right, any questions or comments or discussion? There's a preview item.
Loads of discussion because um majority of that is not factual, um not this last one.
Okay, that's, let's make, I I don't mean to cut you off. I wanna make sure that we're organized about our discussion so we're not shotgunning all over the place. Dr. McCusker just finished her, so do, is there any discussion for Dr. McC-
Is everybody good? Okay, thank you, Dr. McCusker, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Last six years, the board has been so volatile that there's not been uh uh an ability of the board to evaluate themselves. Um and that, so so it's a moot policy anyways. So I don't know that that change is going to make a major difference.
Just for clarification, Mrs. Fisher, it currently says shall, which means that you will, and they're changing it to may, which means that you can if you want, but it kinda suits our board better to have it that way since they haven't done it in a while.
And that was uh from the legislature.
Right, and it is from the legislature, so. Any further discussion on BAA? Seeing none, we'll move on to eight C. Board policy BDA, Board Organizational Meeting. Any discussion?
BDA, the Board Organizational Meeting. Um I'm curious as to why this was ever put into place anyways. I don't know, when we had Dr. Feithenheimer here, um we bumped up against this multiple times, and he initially started the meeting. The board made their first vote, and the president took over. Uh I'm not sure why we're convoluting the process. Uh we we pay a superintendent an exorbitant salary, any superintendent, comparative to other governmental entities. And and there's not a reason he couldn't just start the meeting for one vote and then and then it become. So I I'd like to know the reason that we're even um trying to make this so convoluted.
Well, actually, I actually suggested that um four years ago, and I believe you said I couldn't do it. So that's why we put this other policy in. So now we're going back to cleaning it up so we don't have a temporary president and just go with the person that's the last elected. So we had this discussion before, and actually, that's how I did it for eighteen years. But I suggested it to that board at that time, and they said, no, they didn't want that, they didn't want the superintendent to start the meeting.
All I know is that when uh Dr. Feithenheimer was here in twenty seventeen, when Michael Gregoire lost his seat, did not run, um James Starr opened the meeting. I was voted president and took over the seat, and we just moved forward. It was a very smooth uh meeting, and everyone understood exactly what we were doing, there was not a difficult. I just think this is convoluted because there's just, especially, okay, president, vice president, it it happens, what have you. We start getting into ASBA delegate, half the time the ASBA delegate isn't even the person who goes to the delegate or does the voting or does any of the ASBA work. Most people don't even know what the ASBA delegate is. Um I think we spend a lot of time trying to explain that, I just think we're convoluting it. I don't know why we couldn't just simply, like I said, return to what we had in two thousand sixteen and superintendent opens a meeting if the board president's gone.
Is that your recommendation, Mrs. Fisher?
Well, that's the way it's, that's the way it was, I don't know where this one came from. Um and so that would be, to me, that would make the most sense. Everybody in the community knows who the superintendent is, whether you like him or not, whether it's this district or another district.
So I am, can I give you the history of it prior, it might help you?
Go ahead.
For your question. Um this policy was modified um back with Ms. O'Brien and myself, along with a few others. Um for several reasons, we had historically a board president who uh would not put anything on the agenda, no matter what people asked, no matter how they asked, which is why we added the two or more and the sixty-day requirement. Later on, um we added the VP into the agenda review because it eased the, it eased the members of the board that were on the two side of a three-two board. It helped them to to feel like they were being honored, that their requests would not be completely just annihilated. And that's the reason this went in. It passed through multiple lawyers and the same lawyers that we currently have. Um so I'm not sure why we're changing it, but that's the history of it.
Thank you for that update. Uh so I, being the vice president, have met twice now for agenda review, and other than one tiny misstep of an email, I'm learning not to respond all. Um I feel like I'm, you know, in good faith, following open meeting law, still reading this book, highlighting it. But I feel like, at least for this governing board, keeping it the way it is, uh don't fix something that's not broken. And and I feel like we're doing a great job, and it does give um some sense of professionalism to the whole board that it's not anything, you know, just one or two people deciding, that there's actually some other say in it. So um, you know, being afforded the opportunity to zoom in and have professional communication and open dialogue with with two of us and our superintendent to put items on the agenda seems very productive. And I I don't think we should change it. I did call um ASBA, since I'm the ASBA delegate and learning what that role entails. And I was told pretty soon, um actually, they're rolling out, which I'm sure you already know, they're rolling out, they're updating their, what I call boilerplate, what they call um master policies, and they've already rolled out A, B is coming soon. And I talked to Ms. Bondi, who used to teach in the district, and lovely lady. And she um actually recommended that maybe we just wait till the next rollout comes out before we do any changes because we're gonna, might change it again when the next rollout comes out. So um and also, a really plus, um there's going to be an option, it used to cost five hundred dollars. Now it's going to be free to have as a benefit of being a member to ASBA, having ASBA review our policies to make sure we're in compliance. So if we change something two thousand seventeen, if it was out of compliance, they would let us know. So that is an option that's coming up soon, so perhaps tabling all of this for another month might be in order.
I do believe they were at the study session in two thousand seventeen when we did this.
The um, the, our attorney and ASBA both recommend we go back to the ASBA policy. The reason is, which has happened dozens of times, when a board member emails and doesn't email the president, emails the vice president about their concern of anything on the agenda, that's an open meeting violation if the president and vice president are in the same room uh talking about that topic. And it's happened for the four years I've been here, dozen, uh the last four years since the change in the policy, it's happened dozens of times. So if uh the only way that I would recommend or attorney would recommend uh that we went back to or stay at this original policy is if we only contact the board president if you're not uh the vice president.
Actually, I would like to um ask that the board look at what the attorney has actually sent us. We have multiple, we have from Rob Haas, we have from Denise Lowbry, we have from ASBA, open meeting laws. And it is not an open meeting law violation, I could send it to both Paul and Karen, and it is not an open meeting law violation to say, I'm asking this is on the agenda. That's called scheduling. Now if I, on the other hand, if I were to say, Paul and Karen, I think this used to be on the agenda because I believe X, Y, and Z is happening, and we need to do X, Y, and Z. Now I have opened a discussion, that is the open meeting law violation.
Correct.
Just asking for an item on the agenda without discussing the substance of it is not an open meeting law violation. That is both noted by attorneys, multiple attorneys, and attorney general um opinions, so.
We can bring Denise in for to ask a question.
I would rather we bring in a a.
Rob Haas, or who do you want?
We could do Rob Haas, or you could do really any attorney.
Okay.
Um Denise just seems to be a little bit uh compromised these days.
Can I add one more thing? Uh in all my millions of questions, again, thank you, everybody that's answered all my questions. I did confirm that we have not had any attorney general actual violations slapped on us, so hopefully we can stand straight and narrow from here on out and continue.
Well, we get filed on all the time, but they they rarely find, have findings.
So and just for the community's awareness, the reason that this comes up is that uh Scottsdale Unified used to run their agenda review meetings the same way that we do. And they were, they received a- And they were, they received a notice from the attorney general from the state of Arizona on potential open meeting law violation, by having what they consider a two-by-two-by-one meeting, which doesn't mean that it's happening, but means the superintendent meets with two people, potentially meets with two people, fifth person. And then that's a daisy chain and that can happen in any combination of ways. It's not to say that anybody is intentionally violating open meeting laws, but, so the community is aware, one of the quickest way for a school board member to lose their seat is to commit willfully an open meeting law violation. If you make a mistake, you know, you get slapped once, maybe twice, and then after that, it gets expensive. And after that, you get to be removed from your seat. So sometimes it's just important to be aware of the, um, the legal climate and the mood of the people that, that wield that power. And we need to be aware of it. So that's, that's how this comes up for discussion. Um, and I think it's good points that people have brought up that we need to, I, I don't see on this correction that we are, that we are using the standard A S B A as a replacement to update. It looks like we're just modifying ours. So if we could bring this back separate with the other policy that was highlighted and maybe have a discussion around what does it look, what does the A S B A policy look like? Um, and then, as Ms. Fisher noted, what the legal opinion is.
One, one additional request, please. Um, if we could go ahead and whichever attorney does come, if they could go ahead and re- review that two-by-two-by-three meetings that, uh, Scottsdale was having, because they are not, they are not this at all. At that district, the, it was, it was like literally they were having meetings. The committee, uh, two, two board members would meet with the committees and the superintendent. Then they would have another, but they were having full-out discussions and meetings. It was not just setting an agenda. So maybe it would be good if our attorneys would go ahead and explain what the actual violations were at Scottsdale. This is not that at all and it would not in any way get us deemed.
Good point.
So that would, that would help as well.
We can have them, uh, give us an explanation on that. But the, the open meeting violation is really around three members discussing, talking about, suggesting on something that they might be voting on in the future. That's where it comes from.
Any further discussion on B E D B A? Okay, moving on to, uh, eight E, B E D D, Rules of Order. Any discussion? Again, this is a follow-up from a work session from previous board where it was agreed in principle that we would limit our board reports to five minutes uh, after a situation that happened earlier this, uh, governing board year. Where there was an abuse of that, it was brought to the board's attention that we never codified that in policy. So this is to give future boards the benefit of that decision that was made. And the reason that decision was made at the time, for those of you that want to go back and reference the work session, I believe Dr. Finch mentioned February twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, it is mentioned that, uh, for time's sake, uh, mainly, and to keep us on task with this being a business meeting, because previous to that, uh, gentleman's agreement at that work session, these board meetings would last sometimes up until midnight with board members taking up to forty-five minutes for their board reports. So we're just trying to make sure that we stay on point, talk about the items that we're supposed to talk about according to policies in our board reports and make them punctual and to the point. Um, any discussion?
Absolutely. Actually, the meeting was not a work session, it was a board retreat. Um, and we did not agree to put something into a policy. What we said is that we would try to limit it down to five. It was a suggestion. Over the course of the last two years, multiple board members have had to go over that multiple times because five minutes is not always reasonable when there's things happening in your district and you need to talk about them. It's good that we try and limit them and we always have. However, when we have constituents that we have to answer to, when we have teachers that, that need our, need us to bring something forward, when we have parents that need us to bring something forward, we are not always able to do that. And, and it's not one member that's, that's gone over. It's every member of the, of the prior board, because some of you haven't had a chance yet, um, have gone over it. Because one of the things, and, and you know, everybody likes to, to look at the board ethics. I think we have them on the wall. It says that we will have thorough discussions. We can't even have thorough discussions if we're not bringing things forward. So that's the reason this was never put into a policy. The policy, the, the purpose of this board is to do our business, but our business is serving our people, our community, our teachers. And, and sometimes five minutes isn't enough. In this last week alone, I've had, um, correspondence on six different topics at five different schools. And there's a couple of them that I received even just tonight that I'm reading, I'm going, I have to miss something. Texting someone I know at that school going, is something going on? Cause you know, there is so much. I understand that we as a board supervise one individual, but we by statute and by law are responsible for every single member of, of the Deer Valley staff and, and our community members. And, and it's not reasonable that we would even do it in the five minutes. It's just not. I would, if we can shoot for it, we can try, but it, it's, it's not, uh, it's not reasonable. I would also like to note, based on that last meeting, we cannot just adjourn a meeting by slamming a gavel. We are a team of five, we are not a board of one. And I, I just think we have to find a way to start working together. We don't have to like each other, we can leave this room and not stand each other. But when we're in this room, we have to work together to some level for the sake of our, of the school district that I do believe each and every one of us loves.
Thank you. Mr. Baughfield? Yes.
Just to respond to Ms. Fisher, five minutes is often not enough to get the job done. But if we're going to extend it beyond five minutes, there needs to be a limit because you can't go for an hour or two hours or three hours. So may I suggest that we look at additional, uh, permission to get an additional five minutes on top of the five minutes. And I'll leave it at that.
But you know, I think that would be a good idea. The problem being when you're on a three-two board, sometimes that doesn't happen. What, what maybe would be good is if we have the ability to call a point of order on one another. Ms. O'Brien and I did that before with each other. Point of order, you're off topic, or point of order. Uh, you know, and the reason I use her as an example, because everybody knows Ms. O'Brien and I did not have a love for one another. But we worked together for the good of the district. At, at NSBA conferences, here upon the dais, and, and sometimes we agreed, sometimes we didn't. There on that floor during a study session, we argued back and forth and negotiated. The superintendent needed X amount of money, but our teachers needed more, and so we did that. We need to be able to work for, to, for each other. So perhaps we put in there the ability to call a point of order if somebody is just drumming on for too long. Would that be a good option?
In, in all fairness, it'd be a great option, except I've seen this board before to no avail. I, I mean, and, and that goes for really any rules in society. I mean, I mean, gentleman, gentlemanly rules of order are only good people that are going to hold themselves to that. Um, I, I mean, sure, that'd be great if we can all agree to follow that principle uh, in, in that process. So, uh, what recommendations are any of you making that we could, um, make to this change that's being offered? I'm sorry, one second. Ms. Simic, did you have anything?
I just would like to keep it the way it is that we currently have it now, it's been working very well.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Pack?
Since this is a preview item and it's almost nine o'clock, I just want to add that I did look around at other school boards and they have two minutes. So I'm appreciative we have five minutes. Um, if we, if, if we decide to make it five minutes, um, certainly I believe Mr. Baughfield and I can always, um, what do you call it? I'm tired. When you relinquish the rest of your time. So I'm perfectly happy to relinquish the rest of my time if I don't talk that much. Or also maybe an extension of a two-minute after the five-minute. Uh, because five minutes is a long time and in five, ten, fifty, twenty, twenty-five, we're going to be here pretty late and we still have public comment. So while I want to make sure we all get to say everything we want to say, um, putting some kind of maybe second time on it or like you said, point of order, something to reel it in. We can talk about it later.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Finch, if you hold that one off to the side for the next round? No, I just, Dr. Finch, to hold that one off to the side for further comment and discussion. Again, we'll massage that a little bit more. Uh, we still have, uh, preview item eight G. Ms. Moffett?
Good evening again, President Carver, governing board members. Uh, we are bringing to you this evening for preview. This is an annual thing that H R does with you. We bring forward our, um, contract language for your review and your approval before we do issue contracts. If you had the opportunity to read, um, our update, our intention, or our hope anyway, is to be able to issue contracts, um, the week of March twenty-fifth. We're anticipating March twenty-sixth. So with your authorization, um, on the twenty-fifth, we would be prepared to do that. So there are three different types of contracts that we bring in front of you. All of our contracted employees do fit somewhere within these three different types of contracts. One of them is the administrative exempt contract. One of them is the deputy superintendent contract. And the third one is what, um, we call our certified contract that also addresses a good portion of our other professional group, um, with the psychologists set aside as exempt, um, by statute. You'll see, um, that these contracts have been reviewed illegally. We do have them previewed before we bring them in front of you. There are no substantive changes that are being made for this upcoming year similar to last year. So you'll see that most of it is edits, um, that have been noticed, uh, uniformity from contract to contract. Um, one additional edit was noticed between two of the contracts, the deputy and the, um, uh, administrative exempt contract. There was one word, um, changed from duty, duties, I believe, to duty. And we did not notice that in the other contract. So we will make that uniform between the two, um, prior to it coming to you approval on the twenty-fifth. But I'm happy to take any questions that you have at this time.
Any discussion from the board?
Do you have a red line version? I, I read so many contracts every day, if you could just.
Yeah, the red line, I can, I can provide that to you. The red line version is in your, it is not in front of you. You have the, I believe what you're looking at is the clean version.
I am.
The red line version is in your update.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion for Ms. Moffett? Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Appreciate you. Move on to public comment. Dr. Pack?
We have fifteen speakers this evening. You'll be each limited to two minutes and I will read the admonishment. The board invites public comment on the district's business in general and on any agenda item in specific. All speakers must observe the rules of decorum. Speakers must fill out a card listing name, address, and topic and hand it to the board secretary prior to the president calling the meeting to order. Speakers must make their comments in no more than two minutes. If necessary, to accommodate all speakers within the thirty-minute overall limit, the board president may shorten each speaker's time. Constructive criticism, constructive criticism is in order. Rudeness, vulgarity, disruptive conduct, or remarks disrespecting personal dignity are not in order and will not be allowed. Under the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the governing board cannot discuss or act on any items not listed on the agenda. Board members may respond to criticism made by a speaker, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. And speakers, please state your name before you speak. If I can please have Renee Young Esparza, Kelly Lynn, and J D Bowman, Tiffany Hawkins, and Julie Stockwell approach the microphone. And again, please state your name before you start speaking.
Uh, good evening. My name is Renee Young Esparza and I am the band and orchestra director at Berry Goldwater High School. I'm proud to stand here in support of my principal, Dr. Anita Stoltz. It has been my pleasure to work with Dr. Stoltz since her arrival at Berry Goldwater eight years ago. A former athlete and musician herself, Dr. Stoltz has been a champion for student activities and sports, ensuring that every student has a chance to be involved, to lead, and to excel. Whether it's on the stage, on the field, or in the classroom, she believes in the power of the arts and extracurriculars to shape well-rounded, confident individuals. I'd like to say I really appreciate the support that Dr. Stoltz has given to our fine arts program. And whenever I've had personal struggles in my life, she is usually the first one to step up and ask how I'm doing to make sure that I'm okay. And to have a friend, um, who is my leader, I am very happy that I've followed her for the last eight years and I look forward to following her for many years to come. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Lynn. I was a school counselor at Berry Goldwater for three and a half years. Prior to that, I was a teacher in Colorado for twenty-three years. Um, I'm here tonight because after I resigned from Berry Goldwater in October, I did some research on, uh, the rights I had because I felt like I was seriously harassed and bullied and relentlessly targeted. Um, I did research on if I had any rights and come to find out educators do not have many rights. But I did find out some other very interesting things. I've given you all packets, um, of the presentation and the survey that we gave to forty-four respondents. Um, what I found out was that thirty people went to the district pre-COVID um, with the same issues and concerns that I'm, I, I had, um, and nothing was happening. After COVID, uh, people also, uh, left the profession and complained and still no action. So I'm here today to be the voice for those that have left. Um, I am not here to attack, I'm here to advocate for the students and staff at Berry Goldwater High School. If you look at the next slide, we had some, uh, student notes because this is all about the students, we want to make sure that that is the center of this. And then on the next page, you will see some comments, um, from some of the witness statements that were taken. Um, and they're very telling of the rest of the, the presentation. I also want to point out that sixty-two percent of the respondents that took this survey were scared of further retaliation, um, if it was known that they would fill out the survey. And out of the eighty-five people that were on the spreadsheet that we were trying to collect information from, twenty-five of them would not fill out the survey because they were scared of retaliation. These are people in other states and other schools and other districts. So there should be a process that people go through. Um, they should go to the district or a union representative. So the next slide, you will see what happened when they did go to the district. Those are some of the quotes that were pulled from the survey. And then quantitative information is what I wanted to get. And those are the next like seven or eight slides you can look on your, your own.
And, uh, my name's John David Bowman. Uh, I, I was taught at Goldwater for, uh, my last year in education. Uh, but this really isn't about, um, really any, any personal thing. It, it, I'm out of education. I, uh, I put in my early retirement to, to, uh, repay my wife for, uh, for helping, uh, allowing me to, uh, financially be an educator for seventeen years. But essentially what this all comes down to is students because what I know, and again, uh, I, I'm, I'm simply here just trying to, to advocate on behalf of, uh, the, the public teachers, uh, the public school teachers and students that, um, I know every study will show and we, I, I put some of the, the things in the packet for you as well, that it, currently we have twenty-two, uh, I believe it's twenty-two, thirty estimated, uh, at the start of the year, vacancies, uh, open positions in Arizona. And I will tell you that, um, I personally, in my one year, was able to be a part of, uh, seeing what happens when turnover, uh, takes place. And essentially what, what I was, uh, a witness to was that students who are supposed to have one teacher for two semesters have four or five. Uh, it, it's, it's alarming and it, and it really, uh, to me, I think it, it is, uh, uh, according to really any, any study that you, uh, any research that we see, it's the number one thing is not a tablet, it's not a textbook, it's not any sort of new app or technology. Every study will show that student success is tied to engaging teaching. And we can't have that if we have no teachers. Now, I know we've already talked about budget cuts and different things that are going to happen around. Uh, but that, to me- Now, I know we've already talked about budget cuts and different things that are going to happen around, uh, but that, to me, uh, I, I've, I've been spent ten years as an advocate for public education and.
Thank you for your time.
Tiffany Hawkins, good evening. To begin, on tonight's agenda, there's an attempt to cut out the VP from decision-making on the agenda. That is a way how dictators starves. You look, you took several attempts to select a VP. This is not the superintendent's nor the board president's job to take over the by-forces. This is a board of five. Sounds like someone who has a lot to hide or hidden from the prying eyes. For the record, policy BBA, powers and responsibilities require you to share the load and not dominate the board. Instead, you rewrite another one, policy BEDBA, to allow your dominance over the board. You can't have a policy directly contradicting one another. Which one does one follow? With your rewrite, the superintendent has equal power, fifty-fifty, with the board versus the current two-thirds majority. As they are the final say and hold all account belly for district business, they hold the most risk, they shall hold the most cards. Furthermore, a violation of existing policy in OML is that there should have been an organizational meeting voting leadership in to create the January seventh meeting with lawyer. Instead, this was fabricated by a person who had no policy or statutory authority to make such meeting. Next, you violated the law on OML by ending a meeting without a vote on January twenty-eighth, right after chastising the board about their five minutes. In reality, the majority of the public has no clue that the board could even has a time limit because it's not in policy. Attorney General opinion eighty-one zero four one says that the new board is not bound by the stipulations of the previous board as it operates as a non-continuous body. Now that you are making efforts to change policy, so in the future you're preventing violations, still does not remove the guilt of the past because you changed the rules to suit your whim. Lastly, since it's been made clear, the superintendent that he will refuse to obey the direct order from the president on DEI until the next president takes office. Just about all curriculum has some of it in there. The company you're purchasing from, McGraw-Hill, has it very clearly online and embedded in. Considering a marine is our president, last I checked, once a marine, always a marine. That must be put in you in a bind of personality, personally and professionally, considering your commander-in-chief has given a direct order to be followed with fidelity. Rather than blindly accept the assurance that we are.
Good evening, uh, President Board, Board President Carver, Board members, and Dr. Finch. I'm Julie Stockwell. I am a community member and I'm a former candidate for school board. Although I did not win one of the seats on the school board, I have always been conscious of the honor and the trust that, uh, the community places on those who are elected to these vital places of leadership. And it is to this community well of honor and trust I would like to dip into tonight. These positions are entirely voluntary and require a great deal of personal time, and many who serve in these positions do everything they can to respect that trust. However, the school, the Deer Valley School Board has at least one member who works to undermine that trust at many opportunities, and I wanted to speak into the public record as one who regularly witnesses this and is appalled by that member's attempts to school and steamroll or the others. It is heartbreaking to watch this board member cast doubt and suspicion so often on board decisions for the very district she is supposed to help lead through very difficult times. For example, Deer Valley made no secret of what was on the line with the twenty-twenty-four bond and override financial initiatives. Community members in Deer Valley employees are now digging into the financial facts to determine how and when to implement the cuts that are necessary with this loss of funding should nothing else change. We all know how those cuts will horrifically affect our schools and our communities, and it's why so many of us work tirelessly to try to convince voters to pass that override and bond. All of us bring some baggage with pain and loss in our backgrounds to every role we play in our lives, and most of us work hard to give grace and kindness to others because we know pain and loss. I wish I knew what was preventing this school board member from setting aside.
Thank you.
Will Christine Wright, Charlotte Wright, Lilia Long, Victoria Munoz, and Tamara Juarez, please approach the microphone, and please state your name before you speak.
Good evening. My name is Christine Wright, and I'm a parent at Barry Goldwater High School. I just want to say that I absolutely love Barry Goldwater, the admin, the staff, the students. Um, and Dr. Stolk is the reason that my kids attend Goldwater and that we're not open enrolling to other schools, um, like so many in our neighborhood do. Um, her leadership is felt throughout the campus. She values parent input and organized parent feedback group to bring this input onto the campus. She has built the school into a small-town community feel. Barry Goldwater is known for their amazing IB program, but honestly, it's not for everyone. Dr. Stolk knows that it isn't for everyone, and she makes sure that if you're not involved in the IB program, you're invited to participate in the dual enrollment or the Westmeck programs. My oldest graduated from Goldwater in twenty-twenty-two, and she had a huge advantage heading into college because she participated in the dual enrollment program. This would not have happened without the encouragement from Dr. Stolk. Not only does she care about academics, but she cares about the extras, the extras that the students are passionate about. In the seven years I have been a Barry Goldwater high, or Barry Goldwater parent, she has been at every single sporting and fine arts event that we have been a part of. Goldwater has the best administration any parent could ask for, and it's a direct result from the leadership from Dr. Stolk. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Charlotte Wright, and I'm a junior at Barry Goldwater High School, and I've had an amazing experience with Dr. Stolk the past three years I've attended. Um, one of my first memories of Dr. Stolk was when I took the bus my freshman and sophomore year, and she was there every single morning to greet every single student that entered the, uh, campus to the main gates. Um, never once has she made my peers and I feel like we're just a number. She knows most people by name, and if she doesn't, you wouldn't know that she doesn't know them by their name because she'll find something about them. She really engages with all students, um, depend, doesn't matter if they're a part of the IB program, they're a star football player, or maybe they're in the choir or where, wherever they may find themselves. Um, she always has a smile on her face every time I see her in the hallways and always is asking me to make it a great day and to be kind to others. Um, she's a great leader who is able to capture the attention of all the students during assembly in the entire school. She, um, is able to get up there and grab the attention of everybody and to thank all of the students and their hard work that prep during assembly times or spirit weeks. Um, each year I have felt like I've belonged to my school more and more due to her effort to create a sense of belonging across the campus. And she always has the students' best interests, interests at heart, and she wants all of us to succeed and creates a school in which we can all do so. I haven't felt that my education has dwindled while attending, um, Barry Goldwater because of the strong leadership from Dr. Stolk. I have amazing teachers and staff who have helped me succeed in, excuse me, grow through struggles, and many of the staff has played a big role to help me plan my future after Barry Goldwater, and none of this would have been possible without Dr. Stolk's leadership. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and community. My name is Lilia Long, and I'm here tonight as a proud teacher at Goldwater with twenty years' teaching experience. I have the privilege of serving as ELA department coordinator and as a member of our school's guiding coalition. I'm here because I believe that accountability, integrity, and professionalism matter deeply in a school community. Recently, an unauthorized bogus survey was circulated among select current and former staff members, seemingly designed to undermine our principal, Dr. Anita Stoltz. I'm concerned not only about the questionable content of the survey, but about the malicious intent behind it. Dr. Stoltz is an outstanding leader who's created a culture at Goldwater of inclusion, growth, and high standards. Under her leadership, our students are closing the achievement gap even compared to schools without our unique Title I challenges. Anita embodies the DVUSD philosophy that all means all, consistently honoring diverse perspectives and teaching styles to ensure each student at every level is seen, supported, and prepared, not just for graduation, but for life at age thirty. In my six years at Goldwater, I've watched Anita lead with strength, compassion, and genuine care, guiding us through significant challenges, including COVID-nineteen pandemic and the aftermath. Unfortunately, the voices behind this survey do not reflect the heart or the reality of our school community. Frankly, most of them don't even work with us anymore. As Renee Brown notes, strong leadership requires accountability and the willingness to grow authentically even when it's uncomfortable. Good administrators have to do what is right, even if it's not easy or popular in the moment, and good teachers value, respect, and seek out people who lead in this way. That is why you see so many of us here to support her tonight. Clearly, Dr. Stoltz is really, really good at her job. We have so much positivity to celebrate at Goldwater, and we are capable of so much more when we work together for the good of our kids. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Munoz. I'm a teacher at Barry Goldwater High School. I'm a Spanish teacher. I've been at Goldwater for eighteen years. It's the only school I've taught under Dr. Stoltz's leadership. I can testify that I have seen and experienced more opportunities to serve my school community since she arrived. In eighteen years I've been at Goldwater, I can testify that since her arrival, whoever has expressed interest to serve in a committee, be a student club advisor, a department leader, a district meeting, a team leader, or, or attend various professional development trainings, she has supported them. Under Dr. Stoltz's leadership, I have seen more student support and celebrations from leading outstanding student breakfasts, recognition, participating in bulldozer walks, participating in school assemblies before her. In eighteen years I've been there, I've never seen a principal do that. Um, always reminding students and staff of the greatness within them and the importance of building a community of kindness. Uh, when I arrived at Goldwater, our culture seemed to be shaped and guided by veteran teachers. They did amazing job, an amazing job. They had a lot on their plates. In those days, I used to think, well, I'm new, my, my background, I mean, few years of experience, being someone whose first language is not English will not provide me with the opportunity to serve my school outside my classroom walls. Well, this is not the case when Dr. Stolk's leadership began. She welcomed everyone of different backgrounds and experiences, veteran or new, if you wanted to grow in your craft, and she will support you. Uh, as a personally, she has supported me through family, um, hardships, sicknesses, changes in life, and I would tell you, if it wasn't for her, I will continue also to be a national board certified, uh, candidate because she supports us. And a little fun fact, highest number of MBCT candidates in the district, um, is Barry Goldwater. She has also added parent support involvement and booster club, and I want to retire with Dr. Stoltz being my leader.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Juarez, and I have been an English teacher at Barry Goldwater High School for the past seven years. I was hired a year after Anita Stoltz became our principal, so I have witnessed firsthand how our school has transformed into one worthy of respect, pride, and dedication. So allow me to list just a few of the many ways in which Anita has empowered me and many other members of our school community. Each month, whenever there's a new opportunity to secure funding for student-centered projects through grants or fundraisers, Anita has provided us with the support and resources necessary to initiate the process. Just last week, Anita took time out of her busy evening, well past school hours, to help me apply for a grant for our school's new garden, just as she took time to brainstorm and coordinate fund, fundraising ideas to start a composting program two weeks prior. Two days ago, I emailed Anita to confirm her continued support for our school's art and literary magazine, a passion project I started with a group of dedicated groups, uh, student writers and artists four years ago. Within minutes, Anita replied with a single word, absolutely. Her commitment to creative projects on our campus has been unwavering and resolute. Anita's, Anita champions teacher-led initiatives that promote student collaboration, growth, and curiosity. For the past seven years, as a leading member of our school's IB personal project committee, I have watched Anita's consistent efforts to foster collaboration between departments to enrich our students through interdisciplinary units. And I will never forget what Anita said when I once suggested that we should shrink the scale of our project from a school-wide project to only IB students. She looked over at me and in a, in a firm but caring tone, she said, "All students deserve the opportunity to challenge themselves and find their passions." Anita believes in our kids and our teachers in ways that we sometimes forget to believe in ourselves.
Can we please have Lynn Palacios, Amanda Deal, Tate Moline, Esther Castillo, and Ally Murray approach the microphone, and please state your name before speaking.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Palacios, and I'm the instructional coach at Goldwater High School. Before coming to DVUSD in Goldwater five years ago, I spent thirty years in a large urban high school district in the valley. I worked with many administrators and administrative teams. Some of those administrators were excellent leaders and excellent people. Many of them, however, were really only focused on themselves and their next job. They were disconnected from their teachers and their students. I was overjoyed when I came to Goldwater and began working with our administrative team. What an incredible difference. The entire team was then and remains so today completely focused on the continuous growth of all of us. They believe in the potential of all students and all teachers, and they strive all day, every day to help, help each individual see the potential in themselves. As a team, they work harder, are more focused, are more informed and instructionally sound, and are more dedicated than any team I've worked with before. Their egos are not, are not part of the picture in the least. As our principal, Anita Stoltz has been a steadfast guide for her staff. She has invested in the well-being and the potential of each staff member and of her student body. Her desire to make Goldwater a place of learning and opportunity for students keeps her focused on helping all of us be the best we can be. Her vision, her work, and her dedication have been critical to the success Goldwater has experienced, rising to new heights year after year and always leading the way with district initiatives. This year, Goldwater achieved an A-letter grade from the state, a first for us in the school's history and a reflection of the work we've done under her leadership. Anita Stoltz is kind to her core, gracious, compassionate, reflective, patient, calm, generous, and supportive. She, more than any of us, would want us to.
Uh, good evening. My name's Amanda Deal, and I'm a chemistry teacher at Barry Goldwater High School. And I'm here tonight to express my strong support for Dr. Stoltz and the incredible leadership that she has provided to our school. In my eight years working with her, I have only had positive experiences and have been continually impressed with her dedication to both our students and our staff. Under her leadership, our school has achieved its very first A-rating, a testament to, uh, the hard work she has helped foster. She has also positioned, positioned us at the forefront of PLC work, ensuring that we collaborate effectively to improve student outcomes. She has added to our CTE program and dual enrollment programs as well, um, as mentioned before. Uh, most importantly, she's an unwavering supporter of students and teachers, creating an environment where we feel valued, heard, and empowered to do our best work. I'm grateful to have her as my principal and appreciate the positive direction in which she continues to do. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tate Moline, and I am an employee of DVUSD. Dr. Anita Stoltz hired me to work at Goldwater and begin my DVUSD career, where I eventually became the ELA co-depart, department coordinator before I moved into my current role in the data analysis and organizational improvement department. Dr. Stoltz presides over an extremely difficult school, the only Title I high school in the district, with student mobility ranging between thirty percent and sixty percent depending on the year. It is not an easy school to work out because of the demographic, and yet Dr. Stoltz guides the campus with a firm, yet gentle hand. In fact, she turned Goldwater into an A-rated school. Additionally, over the past three years, teacher retention at Goldwater has gone up from seventy-three percent to eighty percent to eighty-four percent for the current two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Goldwater has achieved student growth across all content areas with a strong collaborative culture, becoming the first high school in the district to apply for the Model PLC High School designation. Goldwater also has the highest number of national board candidates in the district, developing leadership across all programs on campus. Dr. Stoltz pushes her colleagues to be their best, but she doesn't shy away from conflict. Instead, she holds people accountable to do their jobs and uphold their responsibilities while still listening and supporting them. To end my public comment, I would like to quote a Bible verse that I believe aptly describes Dr. Stoltz. Philippians, chapter two, verse three, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather, in humility, value others above yourself." Dr. Stoltz leads a challenging campus, but as a servant leader, she certainly values others above herself. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Chef Esther Castillo, but some of you know me and my old.
Good evening. I am Chef Esther Castillo, but some of you know me and my old name, Chef Esther Skinner. I started Berry Goldwater High School in 2017, the same time Dr. Stoltz was hired at Berry Goldwater. When I left Berry Goldwater in 2022, I was going through a life transition halfway across the world. Mr. Skinner passed away from colon cancer, and there were only two people in this district that reached out and checked on me. One of them was Dr. Stoltz. Most of you know that I teach culinary arts, hence the uniform. And could you imagine if all of my unhappy students got whatever they wanted? My program would be a mess. Chef, I don't want to do the dishes. Chef, I don't want to sweep the floor. Chef, I don't want to do this. I started my career in educational leadership, and I was fortunate to have a really strong mentor who gave me the best advice I've ever received. She told me, Esther, this is not a popularity contest. You are not getting paid to be liked. Do your job. My mentor was right in all kinds of ways, and I can't help but relate this advice to the situation Dr. Stoltz is faced with today. Unhappy people should not be the ones setting the goals and leading the way. The ones who know the vision, the ones who know the mission and the job need to make those decisions. The ones who have produced positive results get to make those decisions. Remember, it is not a popularity contest, and she is not getting paid to be liked, so just let her do her job.
Good evening. My name is Ally Murray, and I am our district's gifted program coach. Before stepping into this role, I had the privilege of serving as the gifted specialist and an ELA teacher at Berry Goldwater High School for five years. During that time, I experienced firsthand what true leadership looks like under Dr. Anita Stoltz. Dr. Stoltz doesn't just lead, she uplifts. She empowers both students and teachers to take ownership of their growth, and she leads with empathy, vision, and a steadfast commitment to our school community. During the pandemic, my world felt like it was crumbling. I'd just had a baby, and my father had suffered a heart attack. In the midst of all the chaos, Dr. Stoltz made it a priority to check in with me every single week. She didn't just ask how I was doing, she listened. She gave me the grace and space to take care of my family, making sure I knew that if I needed to step away, I had her full support. And she didn't just do this for me. She called every teacher on our campus, ensuring that we all felt seen and supported during an incredibly difficult time. That's the kind of leader she is. She makes you feel like you can conquer the world. Dr. Stoltz is also a leader of action. At Berry Goldwater, a Title I school, she recognizes challenges as opportunities. When something will benefit our students, she doesn't just talk about it, she makes it happen. Under her leadership, BGHS is known as a community of kindness, a reputation that is a direct reflection of who she is. And for those who have ever heard negative perceptions about Berry Goldwater, let me ask you, have you been to BGHS lately? We have an award-winning student-led restaurant, a giving closet that provides clothing, food, and toiletries to students in need at no cost, an IB program, an extraordinary community of students and educators, and we're an A-rated school, all thanks to a strong compassionate leadership. I was proud to be a Bulldog. I was proud to work under Dr. Stoltz. And tonight, I'd like to take a moment to celebrate the incredible leader and person she is.
Thank you for all the public comments tonight. On the governing board reports, Ms. Simicheck?
I just have to say that my daughter goes to Berry Goldwater, and I am so proud. And we love Dr. Stoltz, so thank you. Sorry, I couldn't help myself. I love her. So there's all kinds of celebrations going on in March, including Read Across America Week, National Athletic Training Month, Music in Our Schools Month. Thank you so much for those wonderful presentations this evening. It's also Youth Art Month, known as YAM, and I'm excited to share, if you don't already know, that five, all five, of our high school performance dancers will be at the Capitol this Thursday around 12 o'clock to perform the Wesley Bowl in Plaza. So my two worlds get to collide because my daughter will be dancing there, and I'll be at the Capitol, and I'm just so excited. Please don't rain. And also, I was able to attend, it's called the Inspired Dance Show last Friday. It brings ten performance dancers from across the state all together at one school. They were at Greenway, and one of those schools was Berry Goldwater, and they did a fantastic job. So shout out to Ms. L. for continuing to make dance an incredible experience for her students. She goes above and beyond. I really just wanted to touch really quick on emails we've been receiving. We've been receiving quite a lot of emails on about three different topics. One is for a request to relocate the bus stop on River Road from Thirty-Fourth Avenue. This is the bus stop where a student was struck by a passing car about a month ago. And I just want to reach out to the community right now and let them know that we hear and we are gathering that data from Maricopa County Department of Transportation. Waiting on some recommendations. We've also heard some recommendations that we're taking into account, including, which was mentioned, moving the bus stop to Twenty-Ninth Avenue, moving the ability to pick up in certain spots, getting some county officials out there to do some road safety upgrades. So I'm really hoping to hear back from our district soon regarding the plan. It was mentioned that the bus stop has been there for twenty years, but just because it's been there for twenty years doesn't mean it's not the best place for our kiddos now. We want the safest, and we all know that our towns are... just want to make sure that they have a safe place to pick up the bus. So if we need to move that, let's please take care of that. One child is one too many. There was also some student threats made by another student at Stinson Hills. That student is no longer enrolled there. We received tons of emails on that. I want to thank you for your emails, but I really wanted to point out that as a school board member, I'm not able to comment on them. Our administration, the administration at Stinson Hills has been able to contact all of the victims in... So I kind of want to leave it at that for now. Like I said, I appreciate the emails, but I'm not going to be commenting on other students when I don't know the full story. And then we have been hearing from our wonderful Gavelin Peak community to make sure that our Mandarin program up there stays strong. We're looking for twenty-three students to start kindergarten this year. I want to thank the community for working so hard to make that happen. I also feel like it's a responsibility for our district to be making that happen, and I really hope that we can start working with them to figure out ways where we can get this message out there to get these twenty-three kids enrolled in kindergarten, if not more. It's really important, and I think we saw the success of that program tonight when we saw our Chinese-speaking awards from Boulder Creek. Those kiddos were at Gavelin because a couple of years ago, when I came down here for their speeches and their Mandarin speeches, they were absolutely incredible. So it's been really cool to watch them grow. And lastly, we are going to be celebrating Highland Lakes on Friday, the twenty-eighth. They're at another A-rated school, and congratulations to Berry Goldwater for being A-rated. And yeah, that's about it. All right, take care.
Thank you, Ms. Simicheck. Mrs. Fisher?
Just before we move on to the board report, if we could get an update on what's going on, I mean, I've never heard a problem with the principal. She's always been a great principal, so if we... Somebody can inform us, is there something wrong? Because we'd like to know there is. She seems to be great. I've never heard a complaint about her. So I just don't... Why? I mean, I appreciate you coming, but I'd like to know why you had to. So, and the administration can provide that. I attended the annual golf tournament for DVEF. Marie always does a wonderful job at all of our events. I am a little concerned that the boundaries from the district may be being crossed. We have always been very careful to protect our foundation because of the great work they do, and I think we may need to consider reviewing the degree of separation just to make sure our foundation stays sound and protected. Number two, I continue to get concerns, as all of the other board members, regarding what's going on with the budget, programming, the management program being removed, salaries. So I am again requesting that we have a study session regarding budget, including the programs that are being considered. I requested that we hold an executive session regarding the personnel concerns by way of email, made it public, making it public again, because it is our duty to protect our employees, all employees. If the board president is unsure what statute it would fall under, the initial discussion could simply be under legal advice, as there is clearly a liability growing, and we need to know a little bit of legal advice, what that direction would have to go before we notify anybody of anything. I would ask that it be an attorney that's maybe in that area but not related to issues. Four, I received concerns regarding cash not being taken at school sites. I know we have IN Touch. We've had IN Touch for a lot of years. I implemented IN Touch in Phoenix Union. It's a great program. I did verify with our finance people that our student activities, our athletics, they're still being provided a cash box for their events. And yet, the individual that sent the concern actually sent me footage of students that he assisted because they couldn't get into a play or an event because all they had was cash. So I don't know who is over student activities, or whether that falls under athletics, whether it's Kim Crooks or someone else. But if someone can look into it and make sure that we are still offering the ability to take cash, not just credit, because, face it, some people don't have credit cards. I know when I was young, I didn't have a credit card. I couldn't do an online payment. Cash is what I had. I was a waitress, you know. We need to make sure everybody's able to go to these events. I do provide my entire board report to the board so that all my requests are given to the powers that be. One of the things that I am including is I had aggregated some of our salaries. Part of that request for the budget is, I think it's really important that we see where these are, which is also very important why I asked the question about the contract. We don't want anybody to do without a job. We do have to do what we have to do, but we want to make sure that if we need to adjust, that we're adjusting and that we're including all of the people, all of our constituents, because ultimately, this is their school district. It is not belonging to an administration. It's belonging to a community. And so that is what I'm providing to the board, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Byfield?
I want to say I was absolutely gobsmacked at Paseo Hills when I saw Into the Woods Junior. It was great. And for those of you who missed it, you missed a great one. And on that note, I pass it on.
Thank you, Mr. Byfield. Dr. Pack?
So I had the pleasure of attending the Deer Valley Education Association Site Leader Meeting, and it was great to get to speak to educators in the room. And I was able to explain to them how I am actually really truly vested in the district, as well as my passion and dedication as a servant leader. I was able to entertain some questions and concerns, and I did receive some follow-up emails from teachers, which I love hearing from teachers about their thoughts and concerns and their suggestions. I look forward to connecting to my board buddies from DVA soon, and it was great also to speak to Matt from AEA, Arizona Education Association, who was hanging out in the room, pretty neat guy. So I really appreciated that time with them. I also did open and read every single email, and there were a lot of emails. And so I usually pride myself into trying to respond to all emails, but emails, but just not possible. But just please know, if you sent an email, I opened it and I read it. And I will just say ditto to what Ms. Simicheck said regarding those emails. And also, talking about our great district, when I'm out and about in my life, it's such a small world. I was at training, and Kim, who was running our I-rated training, started talking about Dr. Z and how great he was. And so, a lot of people in our valley talk about Deer Valley. We are a great district. Calling Asba, the lady that gave me all the information, Ms. Bondi, she taught in Deer Valley and said nothing but highly great things about our district. So it's exciting to be on a board of such a great district, and I'm proud to say I'm a board member. And when I talk to people and hear all these great things, it makes me smile. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pack. To touch on the email statement to back up what Ms. Simicheck and Dr. Pack have said, it's not in some cases that we don't want to respond to emails, but depending on what the topic is, we can't really give any information except for thank you for sending me the email, because if it's in the investigation stages, you know, we need to let the process work its way out. If we inadvertently say something to give you the impression that we're taking care of it, or we agree, then that just muddies up the water. So generally, what we are supposed to do is take your concern and send it on to the administration so that it can go through the proper channels. So if in your email you want to know what the proper channels are, or if you're just venting, then I completely understand that. On the note of the school bus stop, I did talk to Kate Brophy McGee today. She's Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. She's aware of the situation with the bus stop, and told me that the county is already working on what does it take to get out there what they can do with some paint striping and some flashing lights and things that they can do to help with the road in that particular spot. So the county is aware, and they are working on a process by which they can help alleviate that situation. I asked for an update today on the number of enrolled kindergarteners in our Gavelin Peak Mandarin program. We have quadrupled the number, but we're at eight. So there's still some work that needs to be done. Again, it's not a matter of the district not wanting to keep such an amazing, highly sought-after program. It's simple... I've also asked the district to present us with a graph over time, if you will, of enrollment before Cave Creek closed their Mandarin program, because that was the spike that allowed us the influx of students to keep going for such a long period of time. So I'd like to see what it was before, where it started, and when Cave Creek closed, and what do we need to do to try to supplement that? Is Cave Creek aware that Mandarin is available? What happened to all of our Cave Creek interests, if that's what we need in order to keep it afloat? I, too, was able to attend the Deer Valley Education Foundation Golf Tournament, and the corporate sponsorship that we have in our district is simply amazing. These... So at the golf outing, besides just a round of golf and the money that is raised for people paying for foursomes, there's a bid. There's some live bidding that goes on, and these corporations that show up in there, I feel bad for those of us that are just individuals because we couldn't buy anything if we wanted to, because they're so dead set on raising as much money as they can for the kids that the prices go right through the roof. But they outbid themselves. There was one guy in the corner that just kept upping his own bid, so it was kind of comical to watch. But there's a lot of money raised for the foundation at these events, and anytime that anybody in the community that's listening, if you own a business and want to get involved with the foundation, reach out to Marie, and she'll be happy to point you in the right direction for that. I was able to attend the Superintendent Student Advisory Council at Berry Goldwater again this year. This year's theme was Wellness Wonderland. Candy Land was the game that they chose, and the activities that they picked revolved around just overall general wellness. They had different stations set up, from mental health to physical health, social health, online health, what does it look like? And these are all student-led activities. This is a student-led process and program. Basically, the administration is just the facilitators, but these kids develop the entire program, and they make it go from get to go, besides all the work that Ms. Taylor and her group does to facilitate that. But, and it was great to see them engage with each other and coach each other through the challenges that they all face. Also, Coach Eubanks, for those of you that don't know, there was a field dedication at Deer Valley High School to celebrate the life and sacrifice of Mr. Eubanks in the Deer Valley School District. He'd been with us for decades and was a baseball coach for most of those years. And it was an awesome event. For those of you that weren't able to make it, I, too, was able to attend Into the Woods Junior at Paseo Hills. I've got a couple of family members and friends that go to school over there, and it was amazing. If you don't get out into our schools to witness the athletics, the arts, the academics, you're truly missing out. If you don't get out into our schools to witness the athletics, the arts, the academics, you are truly missing out on how amazing our district is. And on that note, Deer Valley High School played in the four A state championship basketball game down at Veterans Memorial Coliseum again this year, trying to defend their title. We went into overtime and lost by a basket. So we were the runners-up, but it was a very action-packed week, a couple of weeks, and that's it. Dr. Finch.
Jed Dunn does a nice job with the boys for sure. I think they are three out of the last four they've been in the finals. They even started in the open and won a couple in the open. The open concept is new to Arizona, a couple of years old. And really what it is, it takes the best teams and starts with that bracket. You can be four A, five A or six A. And Deer Valley won two in the first two rounds and almost won the third round, lost by two to Soro, and went back into the state championship four A bracket. And we actually had other teams as well that went past the point of no return. Once you win too many games in the open, you're not allowed to go back to your class, the four, five or six. Our girls' soccer at Boulder Creek went beyond that point, the farthest in their history. Boulder Creek Boys Basketball was also in the open, went deep in the open. The O'Connor Boys went the farthest they ever did in history in basketball as well. Made it to the quarters, I believe. And so though we are going to be celebrating those folks in the next couple of months at our awards ceremony, if you didn't get a chance to see our ceremony that we have every month, go ahead and rewind the tape and take a chance to see what all the kids, the great things our kids are doing. I just want to thank Ms. Backstrom today, also celebrating music in, is Music Appreciation Month for sure. She does a great job with our programs and we are the envy of the state in the fine arts, not just the music side, but theater, arts as well, choral as well, band. If there isn't, if there isn't an award, Deer Valley's probably winning it. And thanks for your support. You do a nice job guiding the team. I just wanted to give a shout out, a little shout out. Today, Annie's Closet worked together with a group of about a dozen, maybe fifteen helpers with Jason in the distribution building. We picked up food from Bishop's Closet, this is a storehouse in the LDS church, and put together one hundred boxes today. Home Depot actually donated the boxes for free. We got the food from Bishop's. We put it together. Thanks to Student Support Services, the TSW students and the warehouse staff. So thanks to Many Hands Make Light work, we got those boxes out. They will be delivered tomorrow. So there's about six or eight schools that will get ten to twenty boxes for spring break. We call those families. They come in and pick them up and we provide food through the break. So thanks to the crew today. Did a good job. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All future governing board dates are on the website. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Have a good night.
Well, we may disagree, but we do agree.